Hey there.
You doing well?
Good afternoon.
Afternoon, Representative Vale.
I um, I have a caucus I have to do and then we have a meeting in public safety. So I'm, I'm going to turn my video off and just listen for a little while. Then I'll be back later.
Sounds good.
No worries.
All right.
All right, Jeanie, we good?
You are good to go, sir.
All right, welcome everybody to our third, I think of four higher ed public hearings. We are just going to remind everybody that you'll have three minutes to make remarks, which point Jeanie, a clerk, will let you know that your time has ended and we then will go on to the committee to ask questions. Senator Haskell or ranking members do have any comments before we begin?
I do not.
All right, well, why don't we begin? Looks like, I think, Alyssa Kelleher and Mona Lucas, are you both testifying together? Or are you, are you going separately?
I think we're going separately.
Sounds good. Then Alyssa Kelleher, you can start us off.
Okay, excellent. Good afternoon, co-chairs, ranking members and members of the committee. My name is Alyssa Kelleher and I am the Director of the Office of Veterans Affairs and Military Programs at the University of Connecticut. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on House Bill 5544, an act concerning fee waivers for veterans at public institutions of higher education. I would like to share my support for the intent of this legislation, but also share my concerns if enacted. First, I wanted to share with you a bit about the veteran and military affiliated student population our office serves. As one of the best schools in the nation for veterans with over eight hundred and fifty military connected students, we are passionate about providing the best support possible to military affiliated students. Our office is proud to work in a state and at a school that is incredibly supportive of veterans. To continue providing these benefits, we must thoughtfully consider the current proposal at hand and how it may impact current benefits, future benefits and student services. As it stands, veterans use a variety of benefits to cover the cost of tuition, which includes the state tuition waiver and the National Guard tuition waiver. These waivers are two of the most generous in the country and have undoubtedly already attracted veterans to pursue their education at the University of Connecticut. What is not covered with the current benefits in most cases are the additional fees that vary among the state colleges and universities. At UConn, fees not including room and board average around seventeen hundred dollars per semester for a full-time undergraduate student and thirteen hundred dollars per semester for a graduate student on the store's campus. Fees vary between campuses and the type of program the student is enrolled in. Fees cover expenses to the university not covered by tuition and are used to fund student activities and services. When student fees are not covered under Veterans Benefits, they are paid through various means to include financial aid or out of pocket by the student. Currently at UConn, a hundred and seventy-six students are using the Veterans waiver, paying an average of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per semester in fees. Additionally, there are currently a hundred and forty students using the National Guard waiver, paying an average of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars per semester in fees. If this bill is to move forward, the University of Connecticut can expect to lose at least one million dollars in fees each academic year. This potential financial loss of one million dollars does not include the cost of room and board charged to students who live on campus. If the cost of room and board is included as part of the waived fees, the financial loss would be substantially higher and would have a major fiscal impact on the University of Connecticut. The intent of this legislation is laudable, decreasing the financial burden placed on our veteran students to pursue higher education. However, it must be kept in mind that as the statute is currently written, the University of Connecticut is not reimbursed for veteran or National Guard waivers. In addition to the concerns already highlighted, our written testimony contains additional questions and concerns, including but not limited to, given the wide variety of types of fees amongst our campuses and amongst the different universities and colleges, some additional clarification on which fee should be waived would be warranted, especially if the fee waiver would include the cost of room and board or not. Another question is would this waiver apply only to students using the state waiver or also to students using the National Guard waiver? In conclusion, I commend the committee members in their attempt to increase access to higher education for members of our veteran community, but urge thoughtful consideration of the budgetary impact it will have on universities and colleges in the state of Connecticut if passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa. Open it up to questions. We have one from Senator Whitco. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Alyssa, for your testimony. Does the university do any outreach to any veterans groups or the National Guard to try to get students to enroll at the university? Or is it word of mouth and they become aware of the current financial benefits?
We do. We actually have a person in my office that their main role is outreach. So he goes to various veterans groups. He'll go to different events put on by the VA. He has a good relationship with the sub-base. And we also go to multiple events put on by the National Guard. I myself am actually still a member of the National Guard as well. And the National Guard has their own education office. So through all of those means, we put out information about the benefits. And also when we attend national conferences, we also tout the benefits the state of Connecticut affords to veteran students.
Well, since two thousand and one, we've obviously seen a huge increase in the number of veterans that we have, not, not only in our state, but in our country. And thank you for your service, by the way. And do we see any trends emerging differently that we see more veterans coming back to school? Do you realize or are they going off to work? Or what are you guys seeing in your office?
So I can say from our office's perspective, we do, over time, our office has grown because of the fact that our veteran population has grown. We see a lot of students, since the, the input of the post nine eleven GI bill, there's been a huge increase in veteran students attending college, specifically at, at the University of Connecticut. We have a mix of students using all different benefits or a combination of benefits at UConn. So it's not just the two waivers, but it's also a number of students who use the GI bill. And the numbers every year are either remaining steady or going up. Different benefit categories kind of have been going up while others have been going down. But we, we've been over eight hundred military affiliated students for the last few years.
One of the things that this committee is looking at this year is the tracking of students' enrollment, going into the workforce, salaries, et cetera, staying in Connecticut or leaving Connecticut. Do you do any of that type of tracking now?
So we've just started doing some of that, working with our career services office. They do a lot of the tracking at UConn for where people end up after graduation. And we're working with them this year to actually gain some of that information, giving them our list of alumni and seeing where they've ended up.
That would be helpful if you could share that with the committee. I'd be curious to see where UConn grads end up. That's the only question I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator. Next, we have Representative Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Alyssa, for your testimony and also for your service. So I have a question for you and I jumped in a little bit late. I apologize if you actually covered this in your testimony. My own son is a veteran who came back to school. He is attending UConn presently. He lives off-campus. He's older, he's thirty. And so my question is, do you, you mentioned some of the fees and you indicated that, you know, room and board is not covered by the waiver, of course. So I'm wondering how many, if you have data, on how many veterans that do come back are, you know, do pay room and board or whether they live off-campus with their housing allowance or whatever that they get through the GI bill?
So right now, you have to, you know, much like your son or like me when I attended grad school a few years ago, a lot of our veteran students are a bit older, have families, are, are what would be, you know, sometimes known as a non-traditional student. So a lot of them are living off-campus. In terms of the folks who are using the guard waiver or the, or the veterans waiver, only a handful of them right now are living on campus. But it's, it's impossible for us to know if they were offered, hey, you know, you can have this, this room and board for free if they would choose to then live on campus. So that was one of our questions brought up during, during our testimony.
Got it, okay. Thank you for that answer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Next, we have Representative Napoli.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chair. Hi, Alyssa, thank you for your testimony. I've got a quick question. What happens when you have a veteran who may be retired, who wants to go back to school and take some classes? Would, would they qualify for the waivers?
So per the statute, if anybody has served during a period of war as outlined in the state statutes for over ninety days on active duty, then they qualify. So that's Vietnam era, Korean War, various conflicts to include Panama, et cetera, in the kind of in-between years. And then from basically Gulf War I through today has been one continuous period of war per the state statute. So anyone who's served over ninety days on active duty during that period would also qualify. And they have to be, they have to be domestiled in Connecticut for one day prior to acceptance, which is pretty, pretty good and pretty lenient.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Representative. Seeing no other questions, thank you so much for coming in and thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Mona Lucas. You ready, Mona?
I am. Okay, super. Members of the committee, Mona Lucas, and I am Assistant Vice President for Enrollment Policies and Strategic Initiatives at the University of Connecticut. Thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony on behalf of the university concerning HB five nine oh one, an act requiring institutions of higher education to provide information to each student concerning his or her student debt. The University of Connecticut is in favor of providing student debt communications each year. However, we have concerns about the feasibility of providing students the information the bill requires. When considering the requirements of the bill, a few matters immediately came to mind. For example, since students may have a combination of federal institutional and/or private student loans, this means the debt information that would be required for the communication will have to come from multiple sources and systems each year. There's a possibility that UConn will have to obtain written approval from each private loan borrower in order to gain access to the debt information for the community that we need to provide in the communications. And we're also unsure as to the degree to which private lenders will be willing to provide the data that we need for the, in order to comply with the, with the bill. What we would suggest is an alternative option for your consideration. UConn proposes sending an annual communication to each student concerning his or her debt. But our communication would include general consumer information related to student debt. We would possibly include links to the federal student aid, loan counseling and loan management tools that are available. We would share contact information for each of the known student loan providers. And we would strongly encourage students to contact the holders of their student loans on an annual basis in order to stay on top of their debt. You know, the amount of monthly payments they're looking at once they're finished their studies, how close they are to borrowing the maximum allowed per student loans. We wholeheartedly support implementation of increased communications to our students regarding student debt. We simply ask for flexibility in how we enhance our communications. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Looks like we do have a question from Representative Haynes. Representative, could you unmute?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for being here today. Just one question. I think your alternative idea is great. Can we include a copy of their bill or something? Because some, I mean, I have a daughter in college now too, and, you know, unless I look at her bill and see where the funds are coming from, I don't know what loan she has from one given day to the next. And as a student, I would imagine that they are somewhat uninformed as well, because once the bill is paid, they forget all about it. And I think that's what this bill is all about, is to have them have some understanding as to what they are looking at once they graduate. So they may not realize that they have a Pell Grant and they have this loan or that loan, and this one's federal and this one's state and all that. But is there a way to include what they have included in their financial package to pay you, also with that long list of how to get in touch about each of these loans?
We certainly could speak to what the student received in a given year. So if this communication was going out next fall, we could include information about, so Jane Doe, you borrowed this year a federal direct loan for fifty-five hundred dollars and you also received this grant or that grant or this scholarship or that scholarship that paid, paid your university fee bill or reduced your university fee bill. That piece is fairly, that's information we have in our university systems, because we send it out every year. So that would not be problematic. Because we, we send it to the student earlier in the cycle. But I, I agree with your remarks. By the time, you know, they get into the fall semester, the degree to which they remember how their fee bill was paid or reduced and which source, which sources of financial aid did they receive, I, I, I agree. They, they may not pay attention at that point.
Yeah, if those two items were received in tandem, then they're well-informed.
That's doable, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to ask an additional question.
Absolutely. Representative Turco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks, Ms. Lucas, for being here. Could you clarify for me a little further? I'm trying to take a look at the specific language in the bill. So exactly what are you proposing to do differently than what is suggested in the bill? I, I know that's what your testimony was about, but I wasn't exactly familiar with all the text in the bill to be able to compare it fairly.
So our read of the proposed bill, under that, we would be responsible for letting, well, each of the communications would be tailored specifically to each student. So if I had borrowed from different sources, maybe I'm a transfer student and I borrowed from different sources before I came to UConn, it would be difficult for us to know how much was borrowed in the form of a, and I'm just making this up, you know, ABC university loan, maybe a private loan taken out while the student was at another institution. We wouldn't have that. So our communication, we could fairly easily draw from our systems. It's just the loans that were not certified and are not part of the university records that we thought we would struggle to, to obtain, to be able to give this, student by student, very specific information to their circumstance.
I understand, okay. Well, and that seems to make sense. You only have the information that you have since that student's been part of, you know, of UConn and the loans that you provided them. So I, I can understand where you're coming from, from that. Okay, thank you so much for clarifying. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that, the question.
You got it. Thank you, Representative. Looking for other questions and seeing none. Thank you, Mona, so much for coming in.
Thank you so much for your time.
Take care. Looks like Jeanette Weldon, you are next.
Thank you, and good afternoon, members of the committee. My name is Jeanette Weldon and I am the Executive Director of the Connecticut Higher Education Supplemental Loan Authority, also known as CHESLA. And I'm joined today by my colleague Josh Herlock, who is CHESLA's Assistant Director. CHESLA is a quasi-public entity that works to expand access to post-secondary education and enhance the state's economic development by providing cost-effective education financing programs and informational resources to Connecticut students and families. I'm here today to speak in support of SB nine thirty-two, an act concerning an Alliance District Teacher Loan Subsidy Program. Statewide data indicates that approximately nine point six percent of educators in Connecticut are individuals of color, and of those, thirteen point seven, seven percent are administrators. However, approximately forty-seven percent of Connecticut students are individuals of color. This disparity is problematic as a growing body of evidence suggests that outcomes such as test scores and attendance are affected by the demographic match between teachers and students. We believe that addressing the shortage of educators of color is a key step in providing students of color with the tools they need to succeed in school. SB nine thirty-two would give CHESLA the ability to provide a loan rate subsidy on CHESLA student and refinance loans for educators, including educators of color, who commit to teaching in Connecticut Alliance District Schools. CHESLA would work with the State Department of Education to develop eligibility criteria, including, for example, directing the subsidy towards certain shortage areas of expertise. Importantly, the loan rate will revert to the original unsubsidized rate if an individual receiving the subsidy no longer meets the eligibility criteria. SB nine thirty-two would also create a loan loss reserve to enable CHESLA to expand this loan rate subsidy to educators that may not otherwise qualify for a CHESLA loan. We believe that the ability to also use this account as a loan funding source will provide even greater flexibility. Implementing this program will require issuance of seven million dollars of state general obligation bonds to fund the loan rate subsidy and the loan loss or, or funding account. We believe that SB nine thirty-two would prove to be a valuable tool in supporting statewide efforts to improve experience of students in Alliance District Schools, particularly as the districts work to recruit and retain educators of color. We're happy to work with members of the committee and any other stakeholders to ensure that this legislation achieves its intended goals. And I'm also pleased to report that written testimony in support of this bill is being submitted by Dr. Leslie Torres Rodriguez, Superintendent of Hartford Public Schools, and Juan Mendoza, Assistant Superintendent of Waterbury Public Schools.
Thank you so much, Jeanette. I will now open it up to the committee if anybody has any questions. Seeing none. Jeanette, Josh, thank you both so much for your time.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Mr. Chair. I was slow on the.
No problem. Go right ahead.
Jeanette, wonderful to see you. Thank you so much for your time and for your testimony, your work on this bill. Just a very quick question for you. You know, we know that in the state of Connecticut, we are experiencing a shortage in minority teachers. I believe something like seven percent of Connecticut teachers are people of color. Obviously, this bill doesn't directly solve that problem, but it, it may lend a hand in recruiting teachers who might be interested in serving in, in Alliance Districts. I wanted to talk, to, to, to give you an opportunity to talk about how those, those goals are related and how this program might, might impact that sort of frustrating statistic that, that people of color are so underrepresented in, in our teaching workforce.
Yes, so as you know, there are thirty-three Alliance School Districts in the state. And we believe, and in our discussions with SDE and talent officers at school districts that are some of those Alliance Districts, the feedback that we received was that they really need a, a, an arsenal of tools to achieve their minority teacher recruitment goals. And so this would be one tool that would be out there. Obviously, it's not going to appeal to every teacher of color recruit. It's not going to meet everyone's needs, but it's one tool that can address the needs of some of those individuals. And so we think it's important for SDE to have a range of tools that they can work with, such that they can tailor their recruitment efforts to the specific needs of the individual.
I really appreciate that, Jeanette, and thank you so much for, for the expertise that you bring to this topic. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Senator, Representative Turco, followed by Representative Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great to see you, Executive Director Weldon. Can you tell me, and I don't know, maybe it's, it will be established after the bill is passed, but what are the, the specifications for somebody that qualifies for this loan, subsidized loan? Do they have to stay in Connecticut for a number of years and, and work here? What, what are the parameters of the, the program?
So the basic parameter would be that they commit to teaching in an Alliance School District. And that would be for the life of the loan. And if they leave or they stay in Connecticut, but they take another job outside of those school districts, then the loan, the loan rate subsidy would disappear, would no longer be in effect. So that's the, the basic commitment is that you are teaching in an Alliance School District. And as I mentioned, we would work with SDE if they wanted to, if they felt it was important to focus on any particular areas of expertise, you know, math and science teachers, that sort of thing.
Okay, and do you happen to have any data or background information on how much this could potentially save somebody with this subsidy? And I know that depends on the size of their student loan. But if you run any hypotheticals, I'm just wondering what kind of fiscal numbers we're looking at as an incentive for someone to teach in an Alliance District? If they knew they were going to save twenty-five thousand dollars to work in Alliance District because of this program, maybe that's a big incentive. If it was only a thousand dollars, maybe it's not a big incentive. Do you have any information on that?
Right, so we modeled the, we did some preliminary modeling and we were looking at a fifty percent loan rate subsidy. And Josh, do you have any of those? Can you give an example of, of what it might be for an average borrower?
Yes, so if we assumed a full fifty percent subsidy with a fifteen-year refinance loan, the subsidy to the borrower would be about ten thousand dollars.
Okay, that's, that's real money. All right, thank you so much for answering that question.
Thank you, Representative. Next, Representative Wood, do you still have a question?
Question answered. Thank you very much. And thank you, Jeanette, very much. I really appreciated hearing your testimony and your thoughts on this. Whatever we can do to increase the opportunities for minority teachers to be teaching, we should be doing. So thank you.
Thank you.
Representative Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jeanette, just a quick follow-up on Representative Turco's question. And Josh, in the hypothetical with the fifteen years, so if someone stopped teaching in an Alliance District, say after five years, and the loan at that point would revert back to the original interest rate, right? The subsidy would go away. At that point, it's a go-forward basis? There's no clawback for the five years that they had already worked in the district, correct?
Correct, there would be no clawback and, you know, we did, you know, the school district did have their service for that five years and administratively, it would be very difficult to implement and collect on a clawback.
Great, thank you for that.
Thank you, Representative, and seeing no other questions, I think we really aren't on this time. Thank you, Jeanette. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Christopher Arnold.
Good afternoon, Representative Elliott and Senator Haskell. Good to see everyone this morning. I'm on three Zooms right now in three states, so I'll try to be as brief as I can.
You, you are coming a little fuzzy. We can hear you. There's just some like background fuzz when you talk. Have you encountered that before?
Shutting off the other Zooms improves it.
Let's see.
How about now?
Still fuzzy, but go right ahead.
Roger, I'll do my best. My apologies. Parapetechic service members and their families face steep burdens to occupational and professional licensure when relocating. That is why 35 states require regulators to issue temporary licenses to military spouses during the review period for a permanent license. Temporary licenses allow a military spouse to go to work immediately following a military move. My name is Christopher Arnold. I am a combat veteran in the Northeast Regional Liaison at the United States Department of Defense State Liaison Office. In last year's letter to Governor Lamont accompanying the Secretary of Defense's report on military spouse licensure, the department noted that Connecticut enacted legislation to accommodate transitioning service members, but has depended on the laws, policies, and practices used to accommodate all licensed practitioners coming into the state to facilitate licensure for military spouses. These temporary licensing and endorsement practices may be sufficient for the usual tempo of inter-state mobility, but have proven inadequate for military spouses. House Bill 6407 seeks to address such recommendations through near-term action, but requires amending to achieve the Department of Defense baseline of license issuance within 30 days without submitting verifying documents. Connecticut is the only state with no general spouse licensure recognition. The department encourages states to engage in immediate actions to fully implement military spouse licensure laws, near-term actions to at least attain a baseline of getting military spouses a license in 30 days based on minimal documentation, and long-term solutions for reciprocity through compacts. Research shows unemployment rates for military spouses are as high as 28%. As the National Military Family Association has observed, while military spouses as a group are more educated than their civilian counterparts, they often struggle to find work. The average military spouse will move six to nine times over the course of his or her service member's career due to military ordered moves. More than half of military spouses work in a career field that requires licensure or certification. More than 72% of those licenses must be reissued upon every government-ordered move to a new state. Although license reciprocity laws are helpful, issuing a license can still take several months without a strong statutory and regulatory framework to support military spouse employment and career portability. Most military spouses are stationed in Connecticut for only two years. This offers a small window to obtain employment, therefore, this waiting time must be eliminated. Thus, the department has set the baseline goal for license issuance within 30 days. To perfectuate this, they modeled utilizing one of the department's best practices with amend House Bill 6407 to allow for spouses to submit an affidavit stating that they are meeting all the statutory requirements and then be deemed eligible to practice until the formal licensing decision. Researchers at the Military Reach Project examined military spouse licensure on a state-by-state level, which found that, on average, occupational boards in Connecticut already have a two-week processing time for all applicants. That should be codified. Expediting applications has been a best practice identified by the department since 2012, but is utilized in some form in 26 states. Military families often require two incomes to achieve their aspirations, similar to American families as a whole. Frequent moves can inhibit military spouses' ability to start and sustain a career. Differing licensing requirements can limit advancement or deter re-entry into the workforce of any location. Spouses often suffer long periods of unemployment and, therefore, a loss of needed income to the family. House Bills 6449 and 6445 provide a right of license recognition for military spouses under Connecticut law, while working toward longer-term solutions through the enactment of interstate licensing compacts. When accompanied by the governor's proposal for temporary licensure for military spouses in House Bill 6407, with amendments to ensure the issuance of a license within 30 days following submission of an affidavit, this triad of legislation represents a comprehensive approach that will make Connecticut a national leader in the area of licensure enhancement for military spouses. The department is happy to entertain questions and further discussions as we support and endorse the other policies set forth in the bill. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll now take it over to questions for the committee. Representative Haynes, go right ahead.
Hi, thank you for, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for being here, and it is a little difficult to hear. So if you don't mind, could you just reiterate your thoughts on the value of the governor's bill that has put forth regarding this issue and 6407? How do they work in tandem? If you could explain that just a little bit again?
And again, my apologies. I have three Zooms open, and I tried closing the two in Maryland, because their session is going a bit long, but I think that is doing something with the sound. So that's a great question, and I will say that, you know, from 2011 to 2016, the department worked with all 50 states and their licensing boards to expedite the acceptance of a license from another state. Many states have enacted some form of relief, 49 states at this point, but these methods have proved insufficient to address the underlying concerns of military spouses. So we've moved to enhance license reciprocity with the understanding that military spouses need assistance now, and that many states have already committed to a variety of approaches. DOD now advocates that states should pursue multiple approaches to reciprocity simultaneously. The available alternatives could be categorized as being immediately attainable or achievable within the near term, to get to that baseline of a license within 30 days without submitting verifying documents, and then more longer-term actions, such as an exemption from state requirements, as seen in House Bill 6445, or the achievement of occupational interstate compacts, as seen in House Bill 6449.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and appreciate you trying to squeeze us into a busy schedule and know what that's all about. So again, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Kicking it back to the committee, seeing other questions. Thank you so much for providing testimony today.
Thank you, and have a wonderful day.
You as well. Next up, we have Johnny Doc, followed by Ashley Zane. Go right ahead, Johnny.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So good afternoon to the committee. For those who don't know me yet, I'm Johnny Doc. I'm Governor Lamont's Policy Director. And to clarify, this is not an administration proposal, but it's modeled on an administration proposal. It's a proposal the administration believes in, and so it's a proposal in which I wanted to make myself available for questions. Before those questions, some very quick background with apologies to those who've heard it in the other committees. 25% of workers in our economy need a state license to earn a living, up from 5% in 1950, more than in any other New England or mid-Atlantic state. And those licenses do an important job of protecting public health and safety and promoting consumer confidence that makes our economy function and function safely. But they also impose costs, and the governor's office has been acting based on a landmark Obama administration report issued by the White House Council of Economic Advisers, the Labor Department, the Treasury Department, that found that among those costs are significant barriers to interstate mobility. And they crunched a lot of numbers, and they found that members of licensed professions are just as likely to move around inside a state as their peers, but between 24 and 36% less likely to move across state borders. And importantly, we don't see those folks apply to our licensing boards and then get denied. They're deterred from even applying in the first place. And so the Obama administration recommended that states harmonize licensing requirements across state borders to address those issues. And this bill and the governor's bill is our Connecticut's opportunity to act on that recommendation, which, as you've just heard, is especially critical to military families. The Obama administration report found that 35% of military spouses work in licensed occupations. They are overwhelmingly women, and they are 10 times more likely than civilians to move across state lines in a given year. So it's critical to military families. Because of that, it's critical to military retention and critical to our national security. And because it's critical to DOD, it's critical to basing decisions that affect the Connecticut economy. So the bill, as I read it, would say that if you move here with a license from another state, your license can move here too, subject to some important safeguards. You have to be licensed in that other state, and there's no evidence that I'm aware of or that the Obama administration officials who had looked at OSHA data and testified in other committees are aware of that says lax licensure laws lead to worse outcomes anywhere in the United States. And second, as drafted, they would have to take and pass the Connecticut test. And frankly, with military families, we may need more discretion to waive those tests, because not all tests are offered regularly, and I'd be happy to talk about some more examples of that in Q and A. And it allows the department to choose the practice level and deny licenses in the best interest of the state. Some language is passed in other states around the country, bipartisan or unanimous majorities, and we believe it's language that makes sense here, makes sense for military families, and as you can see from our other bills, makes sense for all families interested in moving to Connecticut, because new residents, whatever their profession or their spouse's profession, are new customers for our small businesses and newly vibrant neighborhoods for ourselves and our kids. So happy to take questions from the committee on the bill today.
Great, thank you so much. It looks like Senator Haskell has a question.
Thanks so much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Doc, good to see you and to hear about this bill in a different committee. Similar concept, though. I just wanted to follow up on two very brief items. One, we hear that this is a partisan issue when my very limited, admittedly very limited research into this matter shows just the opposite, that we're kind of an outlier among our neighbors, and that some of those states are blue states and some of those states are red states. Can you speak to sort of the allegations around this notion that changing occupational licensing in any way and increasing portability of licenses is partisan?
Sure, I'd be happy to. You know, on the specifics of this bill, I can't imagine anything more bipartisan than making life easier for our military families. I think we just heard from the DOD liaison, who would be in a national position to know that Connecticut is an outlier and an underperformer in how hard we make it for military families who are moving here for only a short time. You know, my hope is that what's good for the goose would be good for the gander, and that we can welcome not only military families, but also the tens of thousands of other families who frankly, for the first time in a generation, have been spurred by this pandemic to consider the virtues of life in Connecticut as opposed to in some of America's bigger cities. The suggestion that even the broader proposal, excuse me, could be partisan was a surprise to me since we've been working off this Obama administration report. I think it would be a surprise, the Obama administration officials, including a former Obama cabinet member who testified in support of the governor's proposals in the General Law Committee, and I think it would be a surprise to the bipartisan governors and legislators around the states who have passed similar proposals. To me, the fact that it's bipartisan suggests that it's a particularly good idea, not that we should be suspicious of it. And I think it's a particularly good idea because it's good for workers to work in a growing economy. And we need to make sure that jobs in any economy provide, you know, a good life at good wages. But the way to do that is not by limiting the number of people who can access a middle-class job. It's by making sure we have strong labor laws in place, like a $15 minimum wage or project labor agreements for state-funded projects that ensure there are good jobs, good wages for anyone who's qualified to do them.
Well, thank you for that answer, and if the chair will indulge, just one more question, Mr. Doc, and that's, you mentioned that this particularly impacts women in the workplace. And you also mentioned that, well, I think implied in your testimony is this is a critical time to actually help folks, largely the majority of whom are women who are being pushed out of the workplace by this pandemic, to help them, and specifically the spouses of active military members, to help them work in Connecticut. Could you provide, just in concrete terms, it's easy to sort of get lost in the weeds here, but what are some examples of the occupations that they might be being shut out of here in Connecticut, that they were engaged in just across a state border, but when they arrive in Connecticut, they can't actually get to work here?
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Senator, for the question. I will do my best. I will say that when I testified on the similar bills in the public health and general law committees, I had my agency experts at my side who could answer these questions in more details. And of course, we're happy for the members of this committee, if they want to follow up with the licensing experts at either of these committees for more concrete examples, happy to do so. I also, I'm going to do my best to give some examples and answer your question. I'm not ducking it. But I do want to, I'm not trying to pick on any professions here, you know? And I think one of the virtues of this proposal and the governor's proposal is that it is blanket. And that's important to provide people who are thinking of a life in Connecticut or who are being ordered here as part of a military family, some certainty and predictability that doesn't require them to look at individual sections of the Connecticut general statutes that are specific to their professions, and instead allows us to say, and the military to say to anyone being transferred to Connecticut, you know, if you've been licensed somewhere for another year, there's a damn good chance you're going to be able to practice under that license in Connecticut without having to say, you know, oh, occupational therapy, that's 20 dash, oh, no, sorry, not occupational therapy. Physical therapy, that's actually 19A, et cetera. But I'm dodging your question, I'm sorry. A lot of professions, particularly the sort of professions where you would be most concerned about public health and safety, physicians, nurses, there's broad portability between states already because the licensing requirements in those states are essentially identical to one another. But on other professions, there are surprising outliers. And so if you look at opticians, an optician apprenticeship in Connecticut, as I understand it, requires 8,000 hours of supervised performance. New York's requires only 2,400. So if you were a military family previously stationed in New York, you completed a New York apprenticeship program, 2,400 hours, you moved to Connecticut expecting, not at your own choice, by the way, expecting to be able to practice this profession here that you were trusted with just across our border, you would instead find that you might have to go back into an apprenticeship program and into work at lower wages to practice that job here in Connecticut. And again, I'm not an expert in optiency, but I'm not aware of any evidence that people are receiving worse eye glass care in New York than they are in Connecticut. And so to those concerned about public health and safety, I would just invite them to bring forward that evidence and as they do, to look at whether the concern is that other states have lax licensure standards in general or that other states include a sort of type of practice that is not what you see here in Connecticut. Because I think those are analytically separate problems and might have analytically separate solutions, one being whether or not we can trust another state's determination in the first place, and the other being whether we have to backstop that determination by finding a way to sort of quickly issue a test for Connecticut-specific material.
Fantastic. Well, thanks so much for your answers, Mr. Doc, and for your time today. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Senator. Next, we have Senator Whitkows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Johnny, for coming today. As you know, this has always been kind of an issue that we deal with in the General Law Committee as well. And you had mentioned that if folks find evidence that they're receiving a substandard level of care in New York versus Connecticut, whatever, but I think it's incumbent upon us, the proponents of this legislation, to advance and do some research on our own prior to forego those assumptions that are being made. Because I honestly believe that we do require an excessive amount of hours for certifications and licenses, just because we've always had it that way, and we've built it to become a barrier to workforce. And I'll just cite one personal example I'm aware of. My daughter went through hairdressing school, and she had to complete 3,000 hours of hairdressing, whereas I think it's 1,500 hours to become a pilot in the state of Connecticut to get your pilot's license. So, you know, how do we get to where we are? Or I know how we got to where we are, but how do we reverse the course and bring ourselves more in line with others so that the naysayers realize that this is a barrier to employment? It has nothing to do with the quality of care, because we can look at the amount of complaints, if you will, per population size and look at comparable to what we have in Connecticut. But do you know in your research if there is any data out there that would negate any of these negative comments about the quality of care that's being provided by licensures in the state of Connecticut if we were to adopt in other states?
So I know that Jason Furman, who was Chair of the Obama White House Council of Economic Advisers, testified in General Law two weeks ago that he had looked at the OSHA data nationally and had not found any kind of correlation between workplace safety and licensing regimes. And I think either you or Senator Austin in that meeting invited him to follow up with some of the specific citations. So if he has not done yet to the General Law Clerk, I will follow up and make sure that that's forthcoming. It's not information in my pretty extensive book at these topics that I have seen. And so I do think that outside the scope of this bill, it is probably worth our committees of cognizance and agencies sitting down with licensing boards and other experts to figure out whether in certain cases, the training and education requirements, the upfront investment of time and treasure required to obtain a license in Connecticut could be reduced without harming public health and safety. Because we heard from that Obama administration report that in addition to creating barriers to interstate licensing mobility, that investment of time and treasure really does create barriers to good middle-class jobs for people from lower incomes, predominantly women, predominantly people of color, who might not be able to afford that upfront investment. And some of them are surprising. The difference between New York and Connecticut on opticianry hours is surprising to me. Again, not as an expert in optiency. We ask 2,000 hours of training before we'll give someone a tattoo gun. As a tattoo tech, that's more training than we require of someone before we give them an actual gun and a badge as a member of our police force. So some of these things could use a second look, but I don't think that's a reason not to act on a proposal that would help our military families or help other new residents soon.
Thank you. You know, I couldn't agree more. I just think that people are set in their ways, and anytime we get into a turf war, I'll call it that, because in my years here at Hartford. people are set in their ways. And anytime we get into a turf war, I'll call it that because in my years here at Harvard anytime somebody wants to encroach on somebody else's specialty, even though it's within their purview and within their training, it creates a very, I'm not going to say acrimonious, but a very hostile environment for for policymakers here to try to figure out, oh, what's the downside? And we always get the ultimate worst case scenario that is way out there that probably would never happen, but you know, it may because accidents do happen. But I think, you know, starting off with our veterans families is a good way to start breaching some of these walls that have been built over the number of years. And then thank you for testifying today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I agree, Senator. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Looking for other questions? Seeing that we have none. Johnny, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, Representative Elliott. Have a good day, everyone. Thank you to the committee.
Take care. Ashley, hold on one moment. I actually skipped somebody who is on the phone. That's all right. Next, we have Erica Paglioli. Erica, you're muted. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chairperson Elliott, Chairperson Haskell and members of the Committee on Higher Education Employment for allowing me to make the case for Bill 5464 establishing a tax credit for clinical preceptors. I would also like to thank Representatives Ted Ed and Turco for co-sponsoring this bill. This bill is very important to me as I'm a registered nurse in the emergency department at Hartford Hospital and a current nurse practitioner student. I graduate from the Family Nurse Practitioner Program at the University of St. Joseph in West Hartford in Connecticut in May 2021. Over the last two and a half years while I've been in this program, I've had a very difficult time finding clinical placements. I have been told by many times by my clinical preceptors that physician assistant and medical students take priority over nurse practitioners when it comes to accepting students at clinical locations. Passing this bill will help many nurse practitioner students find clinical placements, eventually allowing more nurse practitioners to practice. Nurse practitioners are more than just healthcare providers. They are mentors, teachers, educators, researchers, advocates and administrators. Nurse practitioners provide high quality care and counseling to their patients. This can help lower the cost of healthcare for for their patients. Patients who regularly see their nurse practitioner will have less complications, remain more compliant with their medication regimen, have less emergency department visits and shorter hospital stays. Currently, there is a shortage in primary cares in America that nurse practitioners can fulfill. If more students can attend nurse practitioner school, the more individuals there will be to provide quality healthcare to our patients. Passing of this bill is very important to me because nurse practitioners are paving the way through healthcare. They are working diligently alongside primary care physicians and providing evidence based quality care to their patients. Nurse and nurse practitioner students help the community by providing education to their patients, treating their patients, all while learning evidence based knowledge. If more clinical preceptors are available to nurse practitioner students, this will allow the students to have more access to knowledge and better prepare them for their future practice. It has been very difficult for me as a student to find a clinical preceptor, like I said, over the last two years. There have been many times in clinical I needed to be paired up with a preceptor that already had a student, causing the learning environment to be very difficult. The preceptor would have us take turns seeing patients, causing us to see less patients, making the learning environment hectic. I think passing this bill in Connecticut will help the education aspect for nursing and nurse practitioner students. I do not think the public realizes how important nurses and nurse practitioners are in healthcare. Not only do they help patients achieve their best care possible, but they are patient advocates, they are passionate, they are caring and respectful. Increasing the number of preceptors for nurse practitioner students will allow the students the knowledge and education they truly deserve. During my last clinical rotation in my program, I had a phenomenal preceptor. This not only has helped me prepare tremendously for when I go into practice on my own. I wish I had a preceptor like this for every clinical rotation I had in this program, but unfortunately, this was not possible for me. I wish this for future students. I don't want future students to have to worry if they can't find a clinical preceptor. The more preceptors nurse practitioner students have available to them, the more prepared and educated they will be when it comes time for them to practice independently. This will then in turn lead to better better patient outcomes and decrease complications. Thank you for the opportunity to share my testimony, and I strongly encourage each of you to support this bill in order to support the education of nurses in our state. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Erica, for coming to testify. Could get back to the committee to see if we have any questions. Seeing none, Erica, thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Take care. All right, Ashley, you are next, followed by Elizabeth Keith.
Great. So good afternoon, Chairs Elliott and Haskell, ranking members Haines and Whitcocks and members of the Higher Education Committee. My name is Ashley Zane. I'm a Government Affairs Associate with the Connecticut Business and Industry Association. We're here in support of two bills, the first being HB 6406 and Act Exempting Workforce Development Programs from the Sales Tax. We strongly support this as it incentivizes companies to invest in workforce development programs offered by third parties throughout the state. As you all know, Connecticut's workforce ranks in the top percentiles in almost every economic indicator list. And frankly, our tax policy should reflect the value that we place in this asset, especially given the small fiscal impact this would have on our budget. Secondly, we support HB 6407 concerning the occupational and professional licenses of military member spouses. I won't reiterate everything the last two speakers said, but I do want to emphasize the point that a lot of these spouses don't have a choice in where they relocate to, and 90% of spouses are women with a third of this demographic working in licensed professions. So this is also an equity bill within the workforce as well as a workforce development bill in general. So we strongly support this, and we hope that the committee will pass this bill. You know, it does make a difference for a large part of our state where the federal government is such a huge component to the economic success. And we should be doing what we can to incentivize the federal government and federal funding to stay within our state. So with that, I'm more than happy to answer any questions, and we really hope that the committee will pass this bill out.
Thank you so much, Ashley. Looking to the committee for questions. Seeing none. Thank you so much for your testifying.
Thanks so much.
All right, next we have Elizabeth Keith, followed by Kristen Bott.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Representative Elliott, Senator Haskell and members of the Higher Education and Employment Advancement Committee. My name is Elizabeth Keith, and I'm an English professor in the First Year Studies Department at Gateway Community College. And I'm here in support of HB 6402, a study of higher education issues in the state, and HB 6404, Funding of Debt-Free College Pact. I speak to the issue of measures of student success and the ways in which the students first and one college plan does not serve our students and in fact is doing a disservice to the most disenfranchised population. The new plan being proposed will place all incoming college students directly into college level math and English courses with support services such as tutoring and supplemental non-credit bearing supports that have yet to be determined. There's no precedent for this drastic change, and this newly proposed education structure removes intensive supports that students need to close the gaps in learning deficits. In 2013, PA 1240 legislation mandated that students be placed on an accelerated track to allow them to complete their college entry level English or math courses by the end of their first year. And this has had some success. However, these PA 1240 rules would be replaced by a plan for all students to place into college level courses regardless of their skill level. And the support they receive may not be from faculty but from EAs or part time tutors. So I urge the committee to study this concern of a possible violation to the existing PA 1240 law. And we know that students achieve when they are actively and adequately supported and appropriately placed in an institution that valid values their uniqueness and their educational histories. But with the removal of developmental education, this will be in jeopardy. The reason for these sweeping changes to eliminate developmental education are, in the words of the System Office's Accelerated Math and English Placement Policy, quote, "designed to be anti-racist, eliminate structural inequalities, identify and address implicit biases, and promote equitable course completion." In reality, the new model removes the supports that are designed to increase equity among students who have been educationally disenfranchised. These inequities have been exacerbated by the COVID-19 pandemic, and students in future semesters will have more significant learning gaps resulting from online learning. What would really be beneficial to our students as well would be the pact funding to apply to developmental courses as well. Learning gaps that students bring with them to our campuses cannot be closed through acceleration and hasty so-called supports. Many developmental students, many that I've had through their own perseverance and grit, managed to succeed at some level because of the skills they learned in developmental English and math classes. Many of my own students were grateful for the opportunity to become confident readers, writers and critical thinkers. And for many of these students, this took many semesters of arduous work. Acquiring language skills does not happen overnight, nor does repairing longstanding learning deficits that students bring with them to our colleges. The focus of the BOR is supposedly to save time and money for our students. But this plan will leave many of our community colleges' students behind and eliminate opportunities for success.
Excuse me, you've reached the three minutes. Thank you.
I I'm 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 done. Thank you. Thank you.
Fantastic timing. I will now open up to the committee for any questions. Seeing none. Elizabeth, thank you so much for providing testimony today.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Kristen Bott, followed by Diva Khan Bureau.
Good afternoon. Thank you, members of the Connecticut State Legislature, for this opportunity to present testimony in support of Bill 5464, an act to establish a tax credit for providers of clinical nursing experiences. I am Dr. Kristen Bott, a board certified acute care nurse practitioner and the Director of the Acute Care Nurse Practitioner Program at the University of Connecticut. It is an honor to be to be here. This matter is of significant importance to the health of the Connecticut residents and sustainability of our NP workforce in our state. As we have witnessed this year with the COVID pandemic, it is critical that we have an adequate number of advanced practice providers to care for the members of our community. Significant shortages of nurses at all levels, baccalaureate, masters and doctoral, are projected over the next five years. The need is great and continues to magnify with our growing population. In the academic setting where the preparation, training and education of the next generation of nurses and advanced and advanced practice nursing providers occurs, we are significantly limited in our ability to produce new practitioners by a lack of preceptors. Preceptors are colleagues who are already professionally prepared, licensed and practicing in their field, who provide supervision and oversight to developing nurses and advanced practice nursing providers. As discussed earlier in this session by Erica Paglioli, we are not in a unique situation. This is an ongoing issue for NP students and our university is not exempt from the struggle to secure preceptors for our students. When physicians and APRNs are asked why they stop taking students, the answer often is that they are reimbursed from other institutions. As a result, some of colleagues in universities resort to paying preceptors directly and offset this loss in revenue. This is not a good solution. Being a preceptor is a pinnacle of practice and leadership, and our students and communities benefit from the instruction, expertise and mentorship provided by these preceptors. So-called bidding wars have emerged where if one program offers an incentive of $500 to precept a student, another may offer 750 or 1,000 or more. These costs are ultimately passed along to the students who cannot, who can least afford to pay. Many APRNs who would serve as preceptors for our nurse practitioner students are unable to do so as they have already been sequestered by a medical residency program paying a fee to their institution. UConn, as a flagship public university in Connecticut, cannot pay preceptors. As a result, since we are committed to placing every student with a preceptor, we are forced to turn away qualified applicants every year. We need a solution that we can continue to provide quality education and clinical experience to a diverse population of students. There is a better way. The bill before you is a solution to this problem. If the bill is passed, it would create a tax credit incentive to physicians and APRNs who agree to serve as preceptors for the next generation of healthcare providers. It is an equitable solution to the problem and is already in law in Hawaii, Maryland, Colorado and Georgia. We urge the Connecticut State Legislature to pass this bill into law, supporting those clinicians who serve to supervise our nursing students at all levels of their education. Thank you for your time, and I welcome any questions you may have.
Kristen, thank you so much for your testimony. I'll now open up to the committee with any questions. Representative Ziogas, go right ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, hi. Kristen, I I get confused on this issue. We've heard it in the past, last year or two years ago, we've heard it come up before. And I my my first thought is how come the cost of the preceptor and the fact that they're necessary to advance certain levels of of expertise aren't in are in encased in the whole tuition process? When you when you, you know, start out with your your program?
So as a nurse practitioner program or nursing program, historically, we don't pay preceptors. Preceptorship is really seen as a an obligation, if you will, like a professional obligation and really a pinnacle of your practice. We're teaching the next level of providers and nurses. So the you know, the competition has arisen with many physicians' programs where they're they do pay their preceptors, if you will. Oftentimes, they're part of the medical staff at the university. So from an APRN perspective, oftentimes the APRNs who would be precepting our students are actually already required to precept medical residents and medical students because the institution is being paid by by those programs. But historically, we don't pay preceptors in nursing programs.
I guess I understand historically, but I don't understand why we don't consider it because now you're asking the Connecticut taxpayer to pay for and and we're not necessarily the benefit of the individual, I don't know, surpasses the benefit of the whole, you know?
Well, it's it certainly has become an issue with the competition for clinical placements. And, you know, students are already at the tuition is incredibly high at institutions. As a parent going through the college process right now, college tuition is already an exorbitant amount of money, and I don't think that it's realistic to think that we can add in additional costs of tuition where students are already struggling to pay for for tuition.
Okay, I would only ask you to think about what do you do for internships for kids that want to become educators? Or what do you do for somebody who wants to become an internship for an electrician? So it it expands the opportunities for all education and all kids, if you have to think about it that way. But anyways, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Next, we have Representative Haines.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and to my colleague's ending of his question, I guess I want to tag on to that. As an educator or an educator to be, their last semester is a requirement of doing a student teaching. So they have to go into a particular school system in the area and teach alongside somebody. Is this a similar approach to what you're talking about with these preceptors?
Um, is similar, so yes and no. So they're going into the hospitals as either baccalaureate level nurses, so that in that case, they would be on a unit, a UConn professor would or the whatever institution, the professor would typically be on the floor with the students and the students would be they they do have preceptors, but the faculty does come with them to the institute, you know, to the institution where they're doing their practice and the baccalaureate level. On the in the master's level where they are nurse practitioner students, they are so they are going with either a physician, a PA or a nurse practitioner. And they're engulfed in their clinical experience there with them. So I guess it is similar. It's not a shadow. It is an actual integration of practice. So I I would suspect it is similar to a student teacher type of role. The student is not reimbursed for, you know, is not paid for their time in that clinical practice. So they are not so whereas in a residency program, they are part of that team, you know, they are they're relied on for hours and such. Nurse practitioner education is a bit different. So they're not say included in the schedule.
So again, this is just more for clarification, understanding of the situation. The I went to a school where there was a big nursing group of students, it was a big nursing school. I wasn't in that program, so therefore I don't know the answer to this. But they had to do clinicals. Okay, they and this is undergrad, and then they graduated as a as a as a nurse. I'm not sure whether that's CNA or RNA or what it is. But in those clinical situations where they had to do their clinicals and vacations in various different places, is that different than what you're talking about?
So, so the, the beginning baccalaureate education, the university provides the faculty member, and that faculty member serves as the oversight, if you will, of their practice. However, when it comes to their, their senior year, students have a, like a senior experience, a capstone experience, where they would be paired with a nurse who would serve in that role of mentor and preceptor. So there, in their senior year, the baccalaureate students do have that, that one-to-one preceptorship. And it is that way entirely through master's education, the acute care, the APRN education.
Okay, so forgive me, just my last kind of summary question on this is if a student teacher or a nursing student is doing this in their undergraduate work, the student is paying for going to that school, whether it's Villanova for nursing or Gettysburg for teaching. The student is paying their tuition. I don't know in these situations, and maybe you can answer to this. In those situations, is Gettysburg School System needing a tax credit because they have a student teaching, you know, a college student teaching in their classrooms and/or a nurse doing their clinicals?
Right.
You know, Pennsylvania Presbyterian. I mean, I guess where is, where these tax credits happen? Do they happen at the master's level? Or are you talking about undergrad as well?
So I, I can speak to the mast, the master's level. So we are in a, it's a huge predicament. Not only do we have the current COVID pandemic, which has, you know, caused providers to have unprecedented things that, you know, the hours, they're, they're burnt. They, you know, it's really a tough time to be securing preceptors in and of itself. When you roll onto that, the other, some other institutions who are paying, it becomes a competition, even more of a competition. So if the preceptor has the opportunity to make $1,000 per semester for a student from a, say, an online university who is paying the preceptor, our students are sort of at, already at a deficit because we, we don't have that to offer. We are not paying them.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your, your answers and trying to help me straighten this out because I, I have to say, I'm still a little confused as to who's paying who for what. And it sounds like there's a lot of double-dipping going around. I don't know.
We are not paying, yes, and right, we don't pay anyone. And we aren't in the market to pay anyone, and we don't have the capacity to pay anyone. And that, having nothing, nothing to offer, if you will, as a, an incentive is certainly a detriment to our students finding clinical placement.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate you answering.
Thank you. No worries.
Thank you, Representative. Looking for other questions? I'm seeing none. Kristen, we appreciate your time. Thanks for talking.
Thank you for having me.
You got it. All right, Diva Khan Bureau, you're next, followed by Lauren Doninger.
Good afternoon, Senator Haskell, Representative Elliott, Senator Whitkows, Representative Haynes, and members of the committee. My name is Diva Khan Bureau. I'm a full-time professor at Three Rivers Community College. I teach full-time, as I said, in the Environmental Engineering Technology Program and the Environmental Health and Safety Certificate Program, which I am the program coordinator of. I have been at Three Rivers Community College for 20 years. I thank you for this opportunity today so that I can speak with you. H P six four oh two asks for a study of public higher education. I request and recommend that the study be focused explicitly on the CSCUs and the Board of Regents. Recommended substitute language for this bill is included in my written testimony. Over the last decade, there have been many complications and disruptions in our community college system, starting with the merger of the community colleges and the state universities, the continuing swinging pendulum of ideas and perspectives of the many CSCU presidents over the years. How we make the community colleges and universities work is always in flux. And according to whomever the new leader was, the millions of dollars wasted spent on all the new shiny programs that would be put in place but would take several years to implement or never be implemented because we kept losing presidents and hiring new ones, or the millions spent on the consultant fees. Since 2016, expenditures increased at Woodland Drive, which is the Board of Regents. It grew by 90%, while the community college expenditures increased by 4%. Then there was the new buzzword "students first", which was originally about saving money. But then the Board of Region recognized that there was no actual savings. So the Board of Regents made it about students, and then they branded it as an equity initiative. We lack clarity. We lack inclusive decision-making. Smart choices warrant and aren't being made. Resources were and continue to be wasted while these resources could have been used to truly help our students. We have essentially put our community colleges and our state universities, and most importantly, our students at risk. We have roughly 85,000 students in our CSCU system. Over time, these issues created confusion, misinterpretation, and mistrust, which led to a damaged system. Over 1,400 faculty, staff, students, and, and even the past presidents and chancellors, signed a petition to stop this misguided student-first and consolidation plan. Last year, there was a vote of no confidence in the board and the president. There once was a better system in place prior to the merger and the creation of the Board of Regents, where there was good, open communication and discussions. There were vibrant conversations between faculty and staff and administration of the Board of Trustees regarding curriculum and shared governance. These ideas and perspectives led to a better and affordable education for our students. There were more resources and support. This is no longer the case. Non-experts are now making decisions on curriculum, spending, resources that could be used for our students and haphazardly harming our educational institutions. The community colleges were once considered the gems of our communities. Our student population was and still is commonly non-traditional, first-generation, and underrepresented students.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I'm sorry, you've hit the three marks, please.
Okay, thank you.
Three minutes, I mean, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for listening. And thank you, Jeannie.
Thank you so much for your testimony. And it's no surprise that I am, I'm with you with a lot of these concerns. So I appreciate you coming in. Does anybody here have any questions? Seeing none, thank you again.
Thank you.
Next we have Lauren Doninger, followed by Heather Evans.
Good afternoon. I'm a professor at Gateway Community College and faculty chair of the Faculty Staff Council. I urge you to pass House Bill sixty-four oh two with the substitute language provided in my written testimony. It has been 10 years since former Governor Malloy and Mr. O'Jake and launched the merger of the state universities with community colleges and created the Board of Regents. It has been 10 years of a revolving door of leadership and one failed initiative after the next. Escalating isolation of the board from the actual institutions that they are supposed to lead, an information vacuum, and growing tension as faculty have become marginalized, while millions are wasted on consultants and faculty time is spent in meetings rather than with students. It was, it was in 2017 that Mr. O'Jake became the interim president of the CSCU and launched the reckless and ill-considered idea of risking the accreditation of the 12 community colleges in pursuit of a single accreditation for one massive college. Despite the fervent efforts of faculty to have a voice in shaping the proposed one college, we have been ignored as one policy after the next has been presented to and codified by the B O R with regions asking few-to-no questions. The study bill must be passed so that this model, which has created an information echo chamber, a bloated administration, out-of-control spending on a centralized bureaucracy, while the actual colleges with the actual students are drained of resources, can be evaluated. The initial plan for the consolidated college was deemed unrealistic by NECHI, in part because of the speed with which it was meant to be implemented. That haste continues to result in policies that risk serious harm to our most vulnerable students. Despite faculty pointing out the failures in scholarship used to support the plan to eliminate developmental education, the system office is pushing forward. This will leave some students feeling like they are drowning from day one or so erode the curriculum that we will have graduation without education. Regarding House Bill sixty-four oh four, I applaud your commitment to debt-free community college. I hope that you will secure a stable source of funding and consider how the current model that requires full-time enrollment disadvantages some students. I will tell you about Tanisha as her story is representative of many of our students. When I met with Tanisha for advising, she reported concern about her progress in some classes. Tanisha has two young children, works full-time, juggles homeschooling, and has unstable childcare, and she's taking a full course load. Tanisha was taking a full course load because it was required for PACT. By trying to access PACT, Tanisha was set up to fail. Students who attend full-time have better graduation rates because they have the luxury and privilege, neither of which should be the case. It shouldn't be a luxury or a privilege, but it is, to attend full-time. I hope that you will work with faculty groups to identify ways for debt-free colleges, debt-free college to lift all students. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lauren. I'm going to kick it over to the committee. Looks like we have a couple of questions. First, we'll start with Representative Ackert, and we'll move on to Senator Haskell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for being here today. I just, Ms. Doniger, I was trying to raise my hand, but I'm using six electronic devices as we try this new system right now. I was actually honored prior to be a state rep 11 years ago to be on the Board of Trustees under Chancellor Herzog and worked diligently as a volunteer for now what we've created as a large bureaucratic Board of Regents. So I applaud you for being here and raising your concerns. I'm looking forward to this committee, you know, it might not get, get done this year, but I want, there's got to be a focus on how do we rear back the Board of Regents and, and really let, raise up again. I mean, I love our community colleges and our four institutions. I think they should be separate still. I think they should go back to being the, Board of Regents could take care of the four-year institutions and our, and our, and our community colleges being back to what they were designed to do. But I want to thank you for being here, and I want to thank the, the chair for indulging this discussion on sixty-four oh two.
Thank you.
Of course. Thank you, Representative. Next, Senator Haskell.
Yeah, hi, ma'am. I just wanted to let you know that I couldn't agree with you more with regard to debt-free college. If we could, if we could fund the program for part-time students, I agree, it's so critically important. And it, we know that PACT is so limited in who it serves, and there's just a sea of students who would tremendously benefit from that opportunity. So I agree with you. I will fight for more funding. And I just, just wanted to chime in and say, no disagreement from us here, only a lack of resources.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. Next, we have Representative Exum.
Hi, good afternoon. It's good to see you. You too. Good afternoon. I just wanted to ask if you could elaborate a bit about your comment, graduation without education? About, could you please talk about that a little bit?
Um, well, you heard Professor Keith speak a few minutes ago, and she is, she works in the first-year studies area. And the plan now to remove the levels of developmental education and put students right into college level without supportive resources will, will either lose those students because they are not ready, through no fault of their own, or that we will be told to push them through. And there's already a sense of, like, you're failing too many students, or C minus won't transfer. So there's already real concern that our integrity in the curriculum will be challenged. And we've seen it happening in K-12. When K-12 teachers really lost any autonomy in their curriculum because of no students left behind, we started to see just a focus on the test, a focus on the test, and not a trust of those professionals. And I see the same thing happening for us. And I really fear that we are going to do the grave disservice to students of awarding degrees without really having given them the level of skill that they need. And for many of them, that means starting with developmental education. And the scholarship used to support that policy was just shredded by every corner of the faculty, and yet it's going forward.
Thank you for hearing that. I think that's a really important issue, and particularly an important equity issue as we see students coming from all types of schools. And sometimes they really need that developmental education to move forward. It, it can sometimes really make a difference, too, for their future outcome and earnings. So thank you for explaining that a little bit more. And I totally agree on the expansive, more of an expansive use of that debt-free college beyond, for people who are part-time and have some of those situations for which community colleges are ideal. So, thanks, thank you so much. It's good to see you today.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much, Representative. Senator Whitkows, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lauren, I just wondered if you could comment on the fact, I, I noticed you said that the professors feel like they're losing control of their curriculum. And I got to tell you, at least every session that I've been in, I've been in hard for now 19 years, there's always a mandate that we're going to require secondary education to include this, whatever topic du jour is, in their curriculum. And I don't, and obviously that impacts, I think, you folks in the community colleges, of which I'm a product of, I'm very proud of it myself. And because the, they, the schools, our secondary schools are, you know, there's only so many hours in a day, so now they've got to make room for this. And I think that we've heard time and time again from folks at the community college level and at the four-year institutions that these kids are coming there and they are not prepared. And they're, I don't want to say graduation because of time, but, you know, I, we're not doing anything as policymakers. So could you speak to, you know, should, should the General Assembly be slowing down on what we're mandating secondary educators to put in their curriculum and leave it up to the local boards of ed and concentrate on the three Rs, if you will, or somehow make sure that the kids are prepared to, to enter into your institutions?
Well, I'm not a K-12 teacher, and I never have been. So I don't want to, I don't have any expertise in that area. I think that the issues of education inequity in Connecticut go much further back than individual control of the school board. It goes back to redlining and to how we fund schools. I only recently learned that the, all the schools pay the pension for teachers. So a school like Greenwich that pays so much more money that, to, to teachers than a school like, system like Bridgeport, but they all pool from the same pension, from the same money for the pension. So I don't know if we can start by eliminating the things that we're requiring schools to do if we don't address the graver underlying issues that set students up to not have the same experience or opportunity.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's, that's the gap that we wrestle with, you know, year in and year out, whether it's funding or graduation rates or completion rates or dropout rates. You know, what is, you know, sometimes I always personally don't believe it's the school in of itself because I think that the kids are well-cared-for there. They're, in the case, they're giving meals. They feel safe there. It's what happens or impacts them outside of the school hours. And I, I think that goes to post-secondary school as well, that who knows what these students come home to if they have a home to come home to. So it's, it's a really tough thing. And I just want to say thank you for, for coming and testifying today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator. Looking around for other hands and seeing none. Thank you, Lauren, for coming in.
Thank you very much.
You got it. Next, we have Heather Evans, followed by Tracy Chidsey.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, my video seems to be not working, but I hope you can hear me. Thank you, Chairperson Elliott, Chairperson Haskell, and members of the committee. I'm happy to be here to speak in support of House Bill fifty-four sixty-four. I'm Dr. Heather Evans. I'm a registered nurse with a doctorate in nursing. I'm a teaching faculty member for graduate and undergraduate nursing students. And I have a unique perspective because in addition And I have a unique perspective because in addition to being a faculty member, I've also returned and am a student again. Right now, I'm working toward becoming a psychiatric and mental health nurse practitioner. As a student, I value the didactic education I receive as foundational to practice. However, nothing can take the place of clinical experience. Finding a preceptor has always been difficult for students, but finding a preceptor in the middle of a pandemic is a Herculean feat. Like most nurses, preceptors are overworked and caring for patients with limited resources. Asking them to also put forth the additional effort involved with supporting and educating students is yet another layer of complexity for their already complicated work environment. I was fortunate, I found an outstanding preceptor. In fact, I'm on my lunch break between seeing patients with her right now. I learn from every interaction I have with her, from every patient encounter I share with her, and I know that the time I spend with her is extremely valuable for my education. Now, as a faculty member, I continue to educate nursing students who will fill critical needs for care providers in our communities. Many times, our nurses provide care to the most underserved and vulnerable populations and communities. The need for nurses has only gotten more dire with this pandemic. We are now dealing with the nursing shortage that persists and also the growing number of nurses who are leaving nursing workforce due to the stress, lack of resources, and ethical dilemmas they are faced with daily because of the pandemic. Our nurses are tired. Often, they're unable to continue to provide care within our current healthcare system and setting. We have to train new nurses. While seeing this is troublesome and this nursing shortage continues, we're unable to simply just enroll more nursing students into our university programs. We're limited by the number of clinical sites and preceptors. We simply do not have enough preceptors to support our current students, so we're unable to expand our programs. House Bill fifty-four sixty-four will not change the fact that our nurse preceptors are overworked, but it might offer financial incentive for new preceptors to step onto the scene. For every new, new preceptor, we could potentially enroll one additional nursing student or maybe even two. Thank you for the opportunity to share my testimony. I strongly encourage you to support House Bill fifty-four sixty-four in order to support the education of nurses within our states.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. We're going to move to Representative Smith. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say thank you, Dr. Evans, for your testimony. I think on this particular question, it's incredibly valuable to us to have had somebody able to testify from both sides of the street, as it were, and, and sort of give us the full three-hundred-and-sixty-degree picture of the situation and why it's so important for us to move this legislation forward. And I, I thank you for your testimony and wanted to let you know how much I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Next, we move to Representative Haynes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you also. I agree with my colleague, Representative Smith, in his comments in regards to having somebody who's on both sides, and you're the perfect person to answer my question. So as a student or as a faculty member, are you required to find these preceptors?
You know, that's somewhat particular to which program you are enrolled in. Students are always encouraged to find their own preceptors by reaching out to their networks. You know, you may know somebody or maybe you've experienced care in a certain setting and you can reach out to those networks. But failing that, most programs do offer assistance. I actually, from my, my work as a student, was having trouble finding a preceptor. So I reached out to my program to say, oh, my gosh, I don't know who I'm going to find. I don't know, you know, where I can find a preceptor. And so they were willing to step in and help me. Sort of at the last minute, I found out about a preceptor who would be willing to, to take me on. So I was able to then, you know, find my own, you know, just sort of fell into it by luck. And I feel very lucky. I know that other students within the same program, you know, we're on week six now in our, in our semester, and there are two students in my class who only just got a preceptor. So, you know, five weeks have gone by, and now they're behind the curve. They have to still get their one-hundred-and-eighty hours for the semester with a preceptor. It's a long time. That's, that's a lot of hours.
Right, right. Well, thank you for that. So I guess, to answer my question, the onus is really on the student to find that preceptor first.
Yeah, a, a large amount of, of the weight for finding preceptors falls on the students.
Okay. And is the, is, is the difficulty in just that, between the pandemic and other issues there, but there's just not enough of them out there?
There aren't enough. And, you know, as, as we heard a little bit earlier from Dr. Bott, you know, a lot of times the preceptors are, are taken by other medical professions. You know, other, everybody needs clinical hours, you know, whether you're going to be a physician, a nurse practitioner, a PA, everyone needs that time in clinical. So when, when people can pay a lot of money to the preceptors, they may be tempted to take those opportunities. And our, our nursing students, you know, deserve the, the same clinical time.
Absolutely. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate your, your answers to my questions and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Next, we have Representative Ziogas.
Sorry, yes, hi. Heather, Heather, hi.
Hi.
Um, two things I wanted to ask you. I'm not clear, I guess, and where in your training and your education does the preceptor occur?
It depends. As an undergraduate, it, it occurs pretty much through the, you know, all through the four-year program, you know, many times starting in the, in the second year. And that's as an undergraduate. So those would be students who are going to graduate and become a registered nurse. Now, as a nurse practitioner student, they, they happen, again, mostly throughout the program, many times after the first year, after you attend what we call the three Ps, Advanced Pathophysiology, Advanced Pharmacology, and and Physical Assessment. So they, they, then for the entire rest of the program. So, and it's typically anywhere, you know, around a hundred to two hundred clinical hours per semester. Again, somewhat dependent on the, the program, but the credentialing agencies require the, the overall amount of hours. So we, we aren't able to, you know, relieve somebody of certain amount of hours, you know, if, if they are going to sit for the licensing exam, those hours are mandated.
I see. Okay. And just one other thought. Creating a tax deduction for the preceptors may perhaps create more preceptors, but it, will it really expand the, the opportunity for the kids? Because the, the same people who are precepting now voluntarily would probably just do it for the tax deduction. Are we creating more?
Well, hopefully we would be, I mean, I guess time, time would tell. But the idea is that there may be people who were sort of on the fence, but may be willing to step forward now that there is some sort of, you know, financial incentive. And, you know, for every new preceptor, that could be one, many times two. The preceptor I have right now, she has two students, me and another student. We don't, we're not here at the same time. But, you know, that opens up additional opportunities, and we know that we have a, a nursing shortage, and we really have to fill these slots. And the, the pandemic has really just made it worse.
I see. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Looking around for more questions, seeing none. Dr. Evans, thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you so much.
Looks like Stephen Karp just came to the room, so we're going to move back one. So Stephen will be next, and then we'll move on to Tracy.
Thank you very much. I was actually just testifying in Human Services. I'm sorry to be a few minutes late. My name is Stephen Weisit Karp. I'm Executive Director for National Association of Social Workers, Connecticut Chapter, and we're here today in support of six-four zero seven. There's definitely very much a need to have military spouses and actually other persons moving into Connecticut to be able to receive or get the social work license if they've been licensed in another state. As you know, military personnel can use a license from any state, but a spouse that comes along with them into Connecticut cannot do that. And even if they have many years of experience, we often put people through too many hoops to get a license. For, in terms of social work, if you get a master's degree in social work from any school in the country, the curriculum is going to have the same core curriculum. The licensing exam is the same exams for every state in the country. The experience and the supervision requirements that Connecticut has is very much similar to all other states. So all their states are either similar or have greater requirements. So to then make someone come into Connecticut, sometimes with multiple years of experience, and tell them they have to find a supervisor and they have to document it, work in an agency. Sometimes those agencies are gone. Sometimes those supervisors cannot be found. It really makes no sense. Clearly, if someone has been licensed in another state, they have shown the documentation that we require here in Connecticut. In terms of social work, there are areas that we have significant shortages. The field of aging, Connecticut has a particularly high degree of older adults. We don't have nearly enough social workers in the field of aging. We don't have enough social workers in the field of addictions. And we clearly do not have enough multilingual social workers. For agencies, not to be able to easily go out and recruit because we're going to tell people, no matter how much experience you have, you now have to go through a very lengthy licensing process all over again. For Connecticut, really does not make sense. Connecticut has amongst the highest licensing fees in the country for social work. We, we tend to vary between number one and number three. To then tell people on top of that, that they have to do all this extra work to prove something that they've already proved in another state makes absolutely no sense. So in terms of our workforce development in the state of Connecticut, when it comes to social work, not just for spouses of military, but for actually, this bill, if I read it right, would actually apply to all individuals who's moving into our state, we should be welcoming them. We should be making this easy. We should be saying, we recognize your experience. We see that you've been licensed elsewhere. You've done the documentation that we would ask for. Come, we'll give you a license, we'll make it possible for you to practice. So we urge your support for this bill.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We'll get back to the committee, see if anyone has any questions. And seeing none, thank you, Stephen, for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, take care. Next, we have Tracy Chidsey, followed by John Board.
Representative Elliott, Senator Haskell, and members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to comment on House Bill five-four-six-four, an act establishing a tax credit for providers of clinical nursing experiences. I'm Tracy Chidsey, Director of the Yale School of Nursing Clinical Support Unit, and I respectfully urge the committee to support HB five-four-six-four. This bill will support crucially needed workforce development by establishing tax credits for professionals who serve as clinical preceptors to nursing students throughout the state. I know you've heard a few other testimonies, so I just wanted to highlight a few of my, a few statements from my written testimony, save some time. Finding adequate number of preceptors is a continuing challenge for all nursing schools in Connecticut and indeed the nation. Most preceptors receive no compensation for their participation in teaching, despite the fact that taking time to mentor students inevitably reduces the number of paying patients a preceptor may treat. COVID-nineteen has significantly taxed an already burdened system. We are now struggling to catch up on clinical hours since our preceptors were unable to instruct our students during the pandemic. Nursing schools will need more preceptors to help make up for lost time. Considering the shortage of nurses in Connecticut, it behooves the state to do all that it can to encourage ample clinical training opportunities for nursing students. All nursing schools offer their own list of benefits to those who have graciously agreed to precept, such as university library access, free CEUs, invitations to university events, discounts at area, area shops and restaurants. But not everyone can take advantage of these benefits. Thus, the proposed tax credit is a benefit that has universal value and may allow schools to cast a larger net to attract more potential preceptors. A tax credit also reflects our shared interest of all Connecticut residents in addressing the shortage of nurses in the state. A relatively small but powerful state investment in the healthcare profession's academic pipeline through preceptor tax credits will improve Connecticut nursing programs' ability to develop and grow future healthcare professionals in this state and close the gap on the shortage of healthcare professionals. The committee's support of HB five-four-six-four is greatly appreciated. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you so much for coming in. We'll kick it off to the committee, and looking around, we have Rep. Turgot, followed by Senator Whitcoast.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hello, Tracy. Thank you for being here to testify. I've been bouncing around between appropriations where we have the Higher Education Subcommittee and here. So I didn't catch some of the previous testimony on this bill, although I remember it from last year. Had some great conversations. So I just want to clarify from my own understanding and trying to read the language, that the preceptor that could receive the tax credit, is that going to be the individual who's providing the training in a healthcare facility? Or is that the, the, the hospital or, or healthcare clinic?
Yeah, it's my understanding it would be the, the preceptor, the individual would be, would be able to take advantage of that.
Okay, directly, they would get the tax credit for taking on this extra duty that they've been asked to do.
As long as they hadn't received payment, because as in previous testimonies, there are programs that are paying preceptors. So that, that they wouldn't qualify for the tax credit.
And I, yeah, I guess we would, somehow the names would go to the Department of Revenue Services. So someone, someone does their state income tax, they could claim this, and then it would be verified in some way.
So it is, so I, I believe the process will be the, the, the preceptor would submit an application or something to the Department of Public Health with the hours that they, that they precepted for that year. And then, I, I don't know what happens at that point, but that, that's how they would get the credit, the approved credit or.
Sure. And it's a one-thousand-dollar tax credit? Did I read that correctly?
Yes, for a hundred hours of precepting.
Is that enough of an incentive, do you believe? Will it actually make a difference?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I do think it'll make a difference. Typically, a semester is a hundred-and-twenty to two-hundred-and-forty hours, and a preceptor may have two students for the two-hundred, maybe, maybe one student for two-hundred-and-forty hours, so that would be a two-thousand-dollar credit. Or, you know, so I think, I think it absolutely, because I, so we don't, Yale School of Nursing is not in the practice of paying their preceptors either, although there've been circumstances where we have, you know, with agencies. But typically, from what I understand, from, from what we hear, because when we, when we hear from preceptors that, you know, so-and-so is paying, it's typically either five-hundred dollars a student or a thousand dollars a student, depending on the program. So, so I think the thousand-dollar credit is, is right up there.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for that. Thanks for everything you're doing to educate our future nurses, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me the questions.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to Senator Whitcoast. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Just a few questions, if I may. I'm not a hundred percent familiar with this program, and I wasn't on higher ed last session. So the preceptor is somebody other than the faculty member that is the instructor for nursing?
Correct. So the precept, do you want me to?
No, go ahead, you go ahead.
The preceptor is typically is a, is a clinician. So for a nurse practitioner student, that could be an MD, a PA, or a nurse practitioner. And the student will go with that preceptor, you know, where they, where they work, whether it be in a primary care office or in the hospital, and work the shift with that specific preceptor alongside and, and hands-on experience with the clinician.
Is the shortage in the number of students enrolling in a nursing program? Or is there a delay because we don't have enough preceptors when the, when the students are finishing up their, their studies to get in to do their clinical hours, and we need more preceptors, or is it a combination?
The shortage is not the enrollment. We do have, our enrollment increases every year. The, the shortest, I, I'm not sure, I, I don't think I can speak to the shortage of nurses, the shortage of preceptors. For the most part, I know that the payment conversation has brought up a few questions of, you know, why not put it into the tuition and, or absorb it with the university? But it's not necessarily, because we, we have several preceptors that don't even ask about payment. It's more about the time. It takes, it takes a lot of time for them to, to mentor a student, and especially now with the electronic medical records. I've heard over and over again that it's just, especially in primary care offices, A, that spaces are small. But it, it takes a lot of time for them to catch up on their work after having a student all day. It also takes away from their, their, you know, their billing patients too. So I think that, that the shortage of preceptors is more due to what preceptors, you know, So I think that the shortage of preceptors is more due to what preceptors, you know, I think it's overwhelming. So I think, you know, as I mentioned, we offer, various programs offer several benefits to the preceptors, and not everything applies to everybody. But I think providing a tax credit will actually open up, you know, doors to more preceptors. We, you know, we tend to tap the same preceptors over and over again because they're more than willing to do it. But I think, you know, if we could, you know, my office has a lot of cold calling. We are sending emails, making calls to over 200 sites of people like a week, depending on the timing of the year. And I think if we could add this as a benefit, it would actually at least spark a conversation with the preceptors who have not precepted in the past.
We just had the governor's policy director on another bill, and he spoke about how Connecticut requires more hours than other states for licensers. I don't know if you had a chance to hear that. Is the 100 hours that we, I guess, and I don't know if it's us, or is it a national standard or DPH standard that a preceptor spends with a student? Is that on par with other states that you're aware of, or who sets that number of hours?
Yeah, so the 100 hours, I think, is just applied to the tax credit. So students, they are required to have, depending on their program, between 500 and 700 hours. This is the nurse practitioner students by the time they graduate, or to sit for the APRN board exam. So the 100 hours is just, I think, a limit, or, you know, just a guideline of where the $1,000 might come from. $1,000 for every 100 hours, somebody precepts. So it's not, it's not something that, I think, the Connecticut League of Nursing might have made that suggestion as a guideline.
And do you know if the preceptors, are they a one-to-one ratio, or can they do multiple?
For the most, for nurse practitioner students, it is, it is, it's one-to-one. A preceptor may have more than one student, but from my understanding, it's, their schedules are different. So it might be four hours and one half-day with one student for those, you know, second half of the day, second student or.
And I know that we have various nursing programs in different locations throughout the state. And when you're making your calls for preceptors, are you noticing that there's a certain part of the state or area of the state that you're having more difficulty in finding folks that we may need to concentrate on geographically, or is it just kind of across the state?
It's across the state, but because we're located in New Haven, and, you know, we, a lot of our students live in the area, and we have several other nursing schools in the same area. It is very saturated in the New Haven County. And our students, I'm sure for most other programs, we will send them to New London, you know, all over the state. It's not, you know, but I would say for us, it's really difficult, especially for primary care is the biggest challenge, both PD and adult, and this area especially.
And my last question, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the indulgence. If a student only spends 100 hours with a practitioner, but in order to get their certification, it's routinely 400, I think it's 80 or 500 hours, what happens during those other hundreds of hours? Are they just in a group with other folks or just working in the office, monitoring?
So a student will typically have more than one placement a semester, especially depending on the program. So, and then obviously, they have their coursework. So they, the 100 hours is, again, the student most likely is going to be with a preceptor more than 100 hours, and maybe with more than one preceptor. So like, for example, a family nurse practitioner student, they need 120 hours per year in PD, adult, and general hours. So that represents, you know, three different placements for the most part. But sometimes you can only find a preceptor that is available for 60 hours, so you may have to get another 60-hour rotation or depending. So it's, so, I mean, like, we, per year, we probably have about 800 preceptors that we assign to almost 300 students.
Does your office help? I know I said one more question, but does your office help get the preceptors? Because I can only imagine for a student being stressed out if they're taking classes and having to do the clinicals and trying to track down preceptors.
Right. So for Yale School of Nursing, students are not required to find their placement, their own placement. Clinical Support Unit is, we have clinical site coordinators who are doing all the cold calling, working with our preceptor liaisons, who are faculty members, one representing each program that we have. We have five nurse practitioner programs. And so they work closely, my clinical site coordinators and the faculty work to secure preceptor. So for the most part, students are not involved in finding their own placement. But there are, especially this year because of COVID, we've actually had a lot of luck with students sort of helping with the process because they have their own connections now being in the program or, you know, with just other preceptors. So it's sort of a collaboration. But for the most part, the Clinical Support Unit, along with the preceptor liaisons, the faculty, are the ones responsible for finding placements.
Thank you for those answers. Greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You got it. Moving on, Representative Haynes, I'm passing off the gavel to Senator Haskell as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Senator Haskell. Tracy, thank you so much for being here. Just a really quick question, you know, just trying to see where this could go or work. University of Connecticut has a teaching hospital, which I believe is John Dempsey over in Farmington in the Hartford area. And correct me if I'm wrong, but Yale has Yale New Haven, which is also a teaching hospital. Wouldn't it, wouldn't it be nice if these two teaching hospitals that are affiliated with these universities who have nursing programs be the places where clinicals can happen? And I don't know, I mean, these are big hospitals and they have lots of satellite offices all over the state, both of these places. You would think that they would automatically be in the system to provide these clinical things for nursing students. So.
They are very supportive of our programs and students. So we have, most of our placements are in the Yale, New Haven Health System, and we also have in the UConn facilities as well. So they are definitely side by side with us, working to find these placements. I mean, this year especially, we had weekly meetings with the Yale New Haven Health System about how they can help us, and they are promoting their providers to take our students. So it's, you know, so that is definitely already happening. We have a lot of support from the hospital systems.
But I would think because they're affiliated with the universities, that there's not this pay thing going on. No?
Right. So they're not necessarily affiliated. Yes, we share the same name, but they, just to clarify that, but the preceptors that we, that take our students in the Yale system do not receive payment.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative Haynes. And Tracy, thank you again for your testimony. I see no further questions, but we appreciate your time today.
Thank you very much.
Next, we'll hear from John Board. John, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Sander. Hope you've been well. Good afternoon, Chairs Haskell and Elliott, Ranking Members Whitkows and Haynes, and Members of the Higher Education and Employment Advancement Committee. Thanks for the opportunity to testify on House Bill 6404, an act funding the debt-free community college program. As you guys know, my name's John Board, a graduate of the CSCU system and former member of the SAC of the Board of Regents. I'll just come out and say, I oppose House Bill 6404 as a concept of the responsible action for someone to take when they oppose a policy, when they oppose a policy, is to propose an alternative. So then we can actually get to yes. Don't get me wrong, I do believe that the overarching common objective of finding a way to make university more affordable is a noble goal. However, this program has been riddled with issues, most recently when the Board of Regents had to take from reserves to fund the program. While the three funding streams which are proposed are, I guess, they're okay, I still firmly believe that my plan, that my holistic and interdisciplinary tuition contracting proposal, tuition contracting, providing our students and graduates with a fighting chance is the best way to move forward as a state. I would direct members to two pieces of previous testimony, which I gave on Senate Bill 273 from 2019 and House Bill 5895 from 2021. I'll also note that I think that in relation to previous testimony from today, that we do need to look at Math 100P on a university level. There are problems with remedial classes as well as the structure of the Board of Regents as well, and I've proposed alternatives in the past. In closing, I would like to quote President Obama, "A good compromise is a piece of legislation." A good compromise is like a good legislation. It's like a good sentence or a good piece of music. Everyone can recognize it. Then they say, huh, it works. It makes sense. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I'm happy and prepared to answer any questions which members of the committee may have. Thank you.
Thanks, John. I see one question from Representative Ziogas.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Board, can you enlighten me? I'm not familiar with the philanthropic match program.
So, first of all, thanks for the question, Representative. So there is, so what I've actually, I actually have been putting forward this tuition contracting proposal for the past few sessions. I know I've spoken with the leadership of the committee on it. And essentially, the notion of tuition contracting is that a student gets a set rate, a set tuition rate for, let's just say, on the university level, for all four years of their quest to get a degree. After those four years, if it takes longer, their tuition would bump up to whatever the incoming freshman rate would be. So by having this tuition contracting proposal, it provides students with a sense of predictability in terms of what their loans are going to be, how much they can pay every semester, et cetera. There's a lot more to the plan. I know I've submitted details of it to the committee, so that's just a general brief overview.
All right. Thank you, then.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Representative Ziogas. Representative Haynes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, John, for being here today. Appreciate your advocacy always. One of the things that is in your plan, and could you expound on a little bit further, is the whole notion of living here, learn here, live here, and how does that work? You know, one thing I've always talked to my colleagues, Senator Haskell, about is regarding free tuition, you know, the state of Connecticut needs some payback for that. And I think your plan gives some of that to a situation where it's all win-win for everybody. So if you could just expound on that just a little bit, that'd be great.
Absolutely. Thanks for the question, Representative. So my modus operandi whenever crafting policy is, one, try to make it as bipartisan and nonpartisan as possible, and two, make it interdisciplinary. So this tuition contracting proposal is three parts. One, referring to Representative Ziogas' question, it's the notion of tuition contracting. Two is learn here, live here, which is basically implementing the Learn Here and Live Here program. Correct me if I'm wrong, Sander Whitkows, I think that goes back to at least 2014. So fully implementing that, allowing students upon graduation to put $2,500 a year of their income tax payment into a first-time home buyer savings account up to 10 years. Then the funds, we would have the state requires students to either live in the state for five years, or we can tie it to our opportunity zones on a federal level. And then three is the examination of student loan rates, working with Chesler and others to try to bring down student loan rates on a statewide, on a statewide level. And I know that there is a bill for a student loan examination going forward. So those are the three parts of this overall comprehensive interdisciplinary approach to solving the issue of higher education costs in the state.
Thank you, John, and I appreciate the clarification on that. And I assume that it's written up in testimony that you submitted as well?
Yes, I attached the language, the outline, at least, in a supplemental piece of testimony. That should be up for the committee soon.
Thank you very much, John, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative Haynes. I don't see further questions. I'll ask just one, John. You said that the PAC program has been rife with problems. Can you describe any of them?
Well, I think, as you know, Sander, I've been, you know, I've been advocating this plan for some time, and I do think the issues of taking from the reserve fund, taking from the reserve fund this past, I think it was November, November or December, if I'm correct, is an issue, even though I know the intent of the legislature is to backfill those reserves later on. I do think it's an issue, and I think that there needs to be other problems. I know we don't see eye to eye on this issue. I know we haven't for some time, but like I said, hopefully, there's some way that we can at least come to a compromise, if not have a respectful disagreement on these issues. And I know we have the ability to work together on other issues moving forward, both in higher ed and other committees.
Sure. Well, I thank you for your time and for your testimony, John, and appreciate your perspective on this. I don't see any other questions from committee members, so thanks so much.
Hey, thanks so much. Have a good day.
Next, we'll hear from Megan Delivron.
Thank you. Co-chairs Elliott and Haskell, ranking members Haynes and Whitkows, and members of the committee, appreciate the opportunity to be here today. My name is Dr. Megan Delivron, and I'm a professor at Gateway Community College. My path to the community colleges began serendipitously when I accepted an adjunct faculty position at Capital Community College during my postdoctoral fellowship at UConn. I immediately and continually find our community colleges to be the most transformative educational institutions in our society. These critically important and unique institutions provide students a route to affordably further their education. Enter Connecticut's workforce, enables financial self-sufficiency, and fosters personal growth. This not only benefits the students that we serve, but also their families, their employers, and our communities for generations. My deeply held belief in and passion for the impact of our community colleges is why I'm here today. I have grave concerns regarding the ability of the one college to replicate the impact our community colleges have traditionally had in our state. Community is the cornerstone of these colleges, each of which share a strong tie to and understanding of their regions. This local focus enables the colleges to react nimbly to the needs of an ever-changing workforce and contribute directly to local economies. This has been made possible in part due to an agile administrative structure. Traditionally, faculty ideas and initiatives have been governed by the department chairs, the academic dean, the college president, and the CSCU president. In the proposed one college, it is my understanding that faculty initiatives in my area will be overseen by a complex network of administrators, including a subject area associate dean, dean of STEM, associate dean of faculty and students, campus CEO, AVP of academic programs and curriculum, VP Provost, regional president, community college system president, and CSCU president, with multiple lines of reporting. Surely, there has to be a better and more efficient, less wasteful, and more student-focused option than this. The reality of this structure is already being felt at our campuses. This was evident in several recent significant technology failures. For example, the main tool that we use to advise our students was scheduled for an update and taken offline during the peak advising times for the spring semester. In addition, failure of the integration between the banner and blackboard systems this winter led to hundreds of students not having access to their online courses during the first weeks of the spring semester. Obviously, none of this was done intentionally. Rather, these systemic failures are the result of a poorly designed system where there is a high degree of stratification between the student-facing services and decision-making. Lastly, it appears that several of the new programs being offered in the one college have been designed without the importance of a broad interdisciplinary education in mind. There are writing and science courses, for example, being taught in programmatic errors and areas instead of subject area disciplines. I worry that this model will rob our students of the opportunity to be awed by a subject as their professor's passion is imparted through their teaching. I'd like to ask you to reflect on the faculty members who made an indelible impact on your life, how their passion for their subject life, how their passion for their subject area lit a small fire in you. I know that I would not be who I am without those who did that for me. I hope that by supporting HB 6402 and the substituted language endorsed by the Faculty Advisory Committee to the BOR included in my written testimony, we can do better for our students than our communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Megan. I see one question from Representative Wood. Representative?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Megan, very much for your testimony. I think you hit on the key reasons so many of us have deep, deep concerns about this proposed consolidation, the high degree of stratification, which I think encompasses the whole problem or the whole issue and the whole concern quite well. So thank you for your commitment to your students. Thank you for testifying, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thanks, Representative Wood. I don't see any further questions, but we're grateful for your time and for your testimony this afternoon. Have a great day.
You, too.
Next, we'll hear from Stephen Adair. Good afternoon, Mr. Adair.
Thank you, Senator Haskell, and thank you to members of the committee, ranking members, for this opportunity to be here. My name is Stephen Adair. I'm a professor of sociology at Central Connecticut State University, and I recently completed eight years of service on the Faculty Advisory Committee, including five years as a non-voting member of the board. House Bill 6402 calls for a study of public higher education. I recommend that the study be focused specifically on the structure of the BOR system and the system office, and recommended substitute language is included in my written testimony. It's been 10 years since the merger, and since then, the system office has spent well over $400 million on system office administration. Those millions have not been put, put teachers in the classroom, have not provided direct student services, and have not lowered the cost of tuition for students. I also do not think I need to recount for you the missteps, the millions wasted on outside consultants, and the problems of leadership that have played and continue to play in the system administration. In 2019, the faculty and staff across the system voted no confidence in the board and its president. A vast majority of experienced educators in the system do not believe that the current plan to consolidate the community colleges and centralize control over key functions will result in successful student outcomes. The repeated waste of resources since the merger raises the question that this is just not a coincidence of misjudgments, but suggests a structural problem in the way in which the system is put together. Under the BOR, the relationship and communication between the board and the 17 institutions that educate students has been broken. With 17 institutions, the board relies on the system office to mediate the relationship so that all information flows from a single source. Institution presidents no longer have a direct channel of communication with the board. At the community colleges, 10 of the 12 college presidents have left since the announcement of the consolidation. Having exclusive access, the system president is seemingly empowered to direct all change. However, that person is not well-positioned to direct faculty and staff whose daily routines are oriented toward meeting the instructional and functional requirements of their home institutions. This disjunction between these competing spheres of authority is the structural condition that has contributed to these recent mistakes. Prior to the merger, this was not the case. The members of the Board of Trustees, for example, at the Connecticut State University, rigorously evaluated each of the university presidents every year. Trustees would organize forums on campus once or twice a year to hear directly from faculty and staff. Lines of communication were open and overlapped. There are many examples in other states of differing forms of higher education administration. The BOR could be expanded with dedicated subcommittees given direct responsibilities. Over four or five institutions, regional boards could also be created for individual institutions or groups of institutions. Empowering a system president who does not preside over the direct functioning of institutions and service the relationship between the board and those institutions may not be a structure prone to realizing successful change. The state has an interest in getting this right. I urge adoption of HB 6402 with the substitute language I've included. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adair, for your time and for your testimony. I see that Representative Ackert has his hand up. Representative?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the time. Mr. Adair, thank you for being here and discussing this issue with you, and it's been, and I, the efforts that you and the administrators and professors and that have come out and spoke on behalf of what's taken place at the Board of Regents. Earlier, I had mentioned that I was a trustee for the community colleges back under Chancellor Herzog, in which we were all volunteers, and we're active and involved as volunteers in being on campuses and going to different events that were scheduled that we could see what was going on, and then made, you know, the decisions that were required with the, each of the different, at that time, just community colleges. So looking forward to, you know, this, and I'm just curious, and I haven't got a chance to look at your testimony, but I will after we get off this, after we get off today. Has there been any discussion with the Lamont administration regarding some of, maybe, maybe just some changes? I hate doing changes over and over and over, because we've done that over the last 10 years, as you mentioned, on the Board of Regents. Well, we were pretty consistent prior to that as the Board of Regents, as the, with the Board of Trustees. Has that outreach been done, and has there been any open dialogue?
There has been some, some. I would have to say it's been, been very little. There's been a lot of effort. There's a lot of people that are active, both at the state universities and the community colleges, that are, really want to draw attention to this. So there's been many efforts to have conversations with the governor's office. I was successful with a couple of other people from the community colleges back in ours, 2018, I believe. That was a, a meeting with the chief of staff that we have. But I know many others have asked and have not had much access. The governor has largely expressed support for the consolidation.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, okay, you know, I, back, you know, watching what has taken place over the last has been disheartening, and to see the, you know, and discuss, you know, discuss with people that are on the campuses, that are changing the job, and you brought up a very valid issue, is that look how many of the leadership of these colleges campuses have left. You know, because, you know, when you consistently have inconsistency, people go, you know, I don't know where my future is here, or what the future of this, this higher ed. So, you know, I give, you know, I look forward to working with this, the chairs and this committee to see if we can bring more light of it, because it's, I mean, it's been brought up many times, and I just would like to see the focus and, you know, a real attention, you know, whether it's a study, I'll look at your testimony, see what you may look at. But, you know, the reason why we went or got away from the Board of Trustees is because it was supposedly, you know, expensive, and then we find out, we've gone just the opposite. We, instead of any type of savings, we've blown way past what we spent back in the day when it was under the chancellor's office. So thank you again for coming out and voicing your concerns and your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Ackert, and, and thank you, Mr., oh, I'm sorry, Representative Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just a very brief thank you to Dr. Adair. You've been in this the very beginning, been consistent, a steady voice, a solid voice on the truth around this. So thank you for testifying, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative Wood.
Thanks, Representative Wood, and Dr. Adair. Don't see any further questions or comments, so thank you so much for your time today and for your advocacy.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Eric Maroney. Good afternoon, Mr. Maroney.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Representative Elliott, Senator Haskell, and members of the Higher Education and Employment Advancement Committee. My name is Eric Maroney. I live in New Haven, and I am an English professor in the First Year Studies Department at Gateway Community College. I am also here in support of HB 6402, a study of higher education issues in the state, as well as HB 6404, the funding of debt-free college. You know, as you've already heard, there's enormous and untested structural changes that are underway at Connecticut's community colleges, and HB 6402 is needed to put the brakes on these rapid changes in order to determine whether they are actually in the best interest of Connecticut's public college and university students and its taxpayers. I encourage the committee to prioritize the study bill with the recommended substitute language change that has also been included in my written testimony, and as other speakers have attested to, has been approved by the Faculty Advisory Council. You know, many of my colleagues have already testified that the Students' First College Consolidation Plan is ineffective at delivering services or saving money. And so I would like to use my testimony to share the effects that this merger will have and already has had on students, and to try to put a little bit of a face on these issues. You know, one of the most disastrous outcomes of the consolidation project has been an over-centralization of decision-making regarding curriculum and services. On paper, it may appear that consolidation effort includes faculty voice and expertise. However, in reality, this has not been the case. Most recently, the Board of Regents has introduced a policy that will eliminate developmental educational support at the community colleges. The policy, which has seen vocal opposition from faculty, seeks to place all students in college-level courses despite their level of preparedness. As a faculty member in the First Year Studies Department, I work directly with those students whose educational background has not prepared them for college-level coursework. I have to tell you, these are brilliant, talented, and creative students whose journey to higher education simply requires more time and more support. Two semesters ago, I had the privilege of working with someone, we'll call her Miss M. She was a mother of two and a refugee from Afghanistan. Miss M speaks five languages. She was an interpreter for the UN and now provides interpretive services for a local school district. Nevertheless, as a person who arrived to the United States relatively recently, she had not yet acquired the English abilities necessary to succeed in college-level composition course. Similarly, I worked with a young man, we'll call him Howard, who enrolled in Gateway after graduating from New Haven Public School. He was a timid young man who hadn't experienced much success in high school at all. In fact, his SAT scores put him in the lowest ninth percentile. And yet, for the two of them, after completing accelerated developmental coursework, both are now on their way to earning a degree. And Howard even earned an Academic Achievement Award during his first semester. But these things would not have happened without the support, a college degree would have remained out of reach. I think there's any number of anecdotes that I can point to to illustrate the merits of the developmental offerings at community colleges, but more to the point, eliminating these offerings is only one example of the ways that an unaccountable and centralized decision-making is harming Connecticut students. An intensive study of Connecticut's higher education issues is necessary to identify the impact of the merger and other education policies in the state. A study bill is the first step of putting Connecticut's higher education institutions back on the right track.
Excuse me? That centers the...
Excuse me? Excuse me, you've passed the three minutes. Could you summarize, please? Thank you. I'll stop there.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Maroney. Grateful for the perspective that you bring to this conversation. I see that Representative Wood has her hand raised. Oh, Representative, you're on mute.
My kids would say that's a good thing. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Eric, so much for your testimony. I particularly liked that you spoke from the student's perspective on the consolidation, and also very much agree with your point and recognition that students who may not be prepared with the skills for college are bright nonetheless and need this support. I think the rub from what I've heard over the years is, to some degree, this is a failing of the secondary school system, the public school, K through 12 public school system. So I look forward to learning a little more about why this provision is in there, but certainly to your point, too, that there are a number of people who come here from other countries, and maybe their language skills aren't proficient, so there should be provisions for them to be able to access higher education. Thank you again for your testimony. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thanks, Representative Wood. Mr. Maroney, don't go anywhere. Representative Smith has his hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just a little bit of an addition to the comments that Representative Wood just made, which is that I think also we shouldn't forget that oftentimes we have adult learners coming back in, seeking higher education. They also need the same kinds of supports, and I say that based on some personal experience from many years ago, when, as a starving actor, I was approached by an adult taking courses at CCNY and needed help, just finding somebody to type a paper, which I can tell you really needed to be rewritten, because, you know, this is somebody 30, 20 or 30 years outside of high school, who perhaps wasn't the greatest writer then, and, you know, hadn't really had much opportunity in life to hone those skills. And so I think that it's important to remember that, you know, people who need some remedial work come from all age groups and all walks of life, and it's very important for a broad spectrum of society, not just young people coming out of high school or learners, you know, with foreign languages as their primary language. So thank you for what you're doing and for, again, highlighting those needs. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No problem at all. Thank you, Representative Smith, and thank you, Mr. Maroney. I don't see any further questions or comments, but I hope you have a great rest of your day.
Thank you for your time.
Next, we'll hear from Francis Cone. I'm so sorry if I mispronounced your last name, sir.
Thank you, Senator. No, you got that right. It's pronounced a few different ways. Thank you, Senator Haskell, the distinguished members of the committee for having me this afternoon. My name is Francis Cone. I'm a professor of history at Tungstus Community College and have served there for the past 30 years. Between 2007 and 2019, I chaired the Social Sciences and History Department there. I am currently the elected Tungstus representative on the Board of Regents Faculty Advisory Committee. I strongly support House Bill 6402, the study bill, and urge you to pass it with the substitute language I provided in my written testimony. I also ask that you pass Senate Bill 850, which is an act concerning various revisions to the higher education statutes, because that overlaps very much with HB 6402. This year marks the 10th anniversary of the creation of the Board of Regents. This is an opportune time to assess the effectiveness of the board and the system office that implements board policies among the CSU institutions. The evidence demonstrates, indeed, I think it proves beyond a doubt, that the history of the Board of Regents is a history of repeated failure. Over the past decade, approximately $400 million has been expended on system-level administrative costs, with little to show except an expanding expense of bureaucracy, school starved of autonomy and resources, faculty and staff marginalized and alienated, and student services severely curtailed. The so-called Students' First Plan to combine the community colleges into a single entity is just the latest, albeit the most far-reaching and damaging fiasco. The Board of Regents has failed to secure sufficient funding and resources for the institutions it oversees. It has failed to preserve and respect the autonomy of those institutions. It has failed to respect the, and establish a collaborative working relationship with the CSU, CU faculty and professional staff. I encourage all of you to watch the public comment segment of any given upcoming BOR meeting. They're all remote, obviously. You will see a series of well-informed, passionate, dedicated faculty, staffs, and students questioning, criticizing, and raising concerns about various board initiatives, only to be met with boredom, disinterest, condescension, and dismissiveness from the Regents. No dialogue exists between the folk at 61 Woodland Street and the faculty and staff who teach, advise, assist, and mentor students. The Board has failed to secure faculty and staff support for the Students' First Plan. It has failed to properly prioritize resources in the middle of a global pandemic. It has failed to demonstrate that it has any ability to save the taxpayer money except through attrition of faculty, staff, and administrators, which directly adversely impacts our students. It has failed to demonstrate that by centralizing or regionalizing back-office functions, it can save money and maintain services. It has failed to explain how destroying and dismantling 12 community colleges and interfering with the operations of four universities will bring about greater equity in higher education. Just in closing, any study should focus on altering the power relationship and communications between the Board of Regents and system office on the one hand, and the colleges and universities on the other. The current system is effectively centralized, vertical, and...
Excuse me? Excuse me, you've passed the three minutes?
I'll stop there. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Thanks so much, Professor Cone. Don't go too far. Senator Whitco says his hand raised.
Please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I've come to the point now where people that testify and make statements that I asked that you to back them up a little bit, and one of the statements that you made was that the Board of Regents is just... the Board of Regents is dismantling and fifth, the other word you used in there, 12 community colleges. So could you just give us an example of what you see happening where the impact is going on at the 12 community colleges? Because I tell you, when I go visit Northwest Community College up in my area and I hear the great things that are being done up there, it's in stark contrast to what you're testifying. So I just want to hear if you'd get into a little more details, maybe provide some examples.
Sure. Well, certainly in terms of funding, our funding has been flat at best and for years. And when one factors in inflation, really, we have had cuts most of the colleges. So there are a lot of positions that have gone unfilled. Yeah, another area where the colleges are really struggling now is in terms of autonomy, which is required under accreditation too. Ten of the 12 community colleges have CEOs, and they seem to really have no power to make decisions anymore. The power to make decisions rests in Hartford, and that's a problem. Student services, again, have been cut back for years, and that continues. So as we get more and more students who are not prepared to do college, those students desperately need things like tutoring, math and English labs, and there is really not sufficient money to do any of that. And one reason there isn't is the money is flowing disproportionately to 61 Woodland Street. I mean, we could argue all day. I mean, we, every agency in the state needs more funding. We get that. Higher it does too. But it seems the the short-term fix at least is to look at the proportion of the budget that is going to administration in Hartford versus the campuses. The need is on the campuses.
One of the things Go ahead. Yeah, one of the things that we had battled for many, many years in the legislature is dollars for education. And it was a few years ago where we adopted an educational cost sharing formula, and it was based pretty much on the number of students that they have, student population. So some districts may have seen, will see an increase, and some, most, would have seen a decrease because our student population is declining. And so my question to you, Professor, is when you say we're seeing cuts in dollars coming to our universities and our colleges, are we seeing, is it correlated to the reduction in student enrollment, or is it just across the board? What is your belief on that?
I'm sorry, I missed some of what you asked, Senator. My internet kind of faded out there.
Yeah, so just to recap real quick, our ECS funding on secondary schools is based on student population. And you had said that you've seen a reduction in dollars coming to the community colleges year after year, or you're flat funded because, but costs still go up. And I'm wondering, is any of that, was an answer given to you that it may have something to do with a decline in student enrollment? Because we're seeing a decline at our, at our local schools. So obviously, that'll, at some point, the bubble will come up towards post-secondary. So I'm just curious if you could comment to that.
Right. I really don't understand the funding formula, and I don't know if anybody's got an answer to that. I don't understand the formula that the System Office or the Board of Regents uses to fund the System Office versus the colleges and universities. So I'm not sure I have an answer to your question, honestly.
Okay, fair enough. And that's something that I guess we can, as a committee, delve into a little bit to try to understand a little bit better on how the pie is divided. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Whitco. Professor Cone, I don't see any further comments or questions from committee members. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Senator.
Next, we'll hear from, let's see, Ainsley McGuckin.
Thank you, Chairperson Haskell, Chairperson Elliott, and members of the committee for the opportunity to speak to the potential impact of House Bill 5464. I would also like to thank Representatives Hadad and Turco for co-sponsoring this bill. I'm a master's-prepared public health nurse and have been the graduate clinical coordinator for the University of St. Joseph since September 2020. My background in public health nursing has been focused on health equity and improving the quality of care delivered to vulnerable populations, having worked in refugee resettlement, correctional nursing, and local and state public health departments. I'm well-versed in the evidence-based interventions that have been shown to combat institutional racism. Legislative policy that incentivizes adoption of new behavior is the backbone of public health success in campaigns ranging from tobacco cessation to pollution control. Despite the creation of the Connecticut Allied Health Workforce Policy Board by legislation in 2004, the number of minority nurses and APRNs in Connecticut is not representative of our state's population demographics. In 2015, in the scholarly article, "Does State Legislation Improve Nursing Workforce Diversity", the authors recommend that legislators focus on replicating efforts to implement minority recruitment legislation tied to funding and reimbursement and establishing pipeline and recruitment and retention initiatives. Developing a pipeline that continues beyond frontline nurses, however, is critical. If nurses, in particular nurses of color, are not supported in their efforts to advance in their careers, ascend to decision-making positions, and subsequently mentor those coming after them, there will be no opportunity for policy change at the institutional level. This bill expands the tools at our disposal to encourage underrepresented advanced-practice nurses and other professionals and supports them as they take on their role of mentor and leader. USJ has a very diverse student body drawing from communities across the state with a wide spectrum of income levels and cultural backgrounds. Many of our students have faced adversity as they attempted to pursue higher education. We make every effort to find preceptors to whom our students can relate and who will be ongoing mentors in their careers. We were sorely in need of preceptors who met these criteria before COVID. Professionals, who would be ideal, are busy with their work commitments, involved in their communities, and active in the lives of their families. The pandemic has decimated our already shallow preceptor pool over the past year. We've had many preceptors too overwhelmed by their workload to take a student. We've had preceptors unable to take students at the last minute because they felt ill with COVID. We've lost preceptors to COVID. There's no more urgent time for this type of legislation. We need new sources to refill the pool of willing mentors, and we need to engage them by offering benefits that will be appealing and relevant to them. Legislation focused on delivery of tangible reinforcements to augment income adds to the protection and diversification of a professional community. It also tackles some of the disparities in the workforce by increasing the number of providers of color and financially unburdened those clinicians willing to go the extra mile for their profession. Thank you for the opportunity to share my testimony. I strongly encourage you to support House Bill 5464 and the education of nurses in our state. I welcome any questions.
Thanks so much, ma'am, for your testimony. I can say that when we considered this bill in early 2020, we never could have imagined how critically important it would be, to your point, to ensure that Connecticut has a highly educated and well-prepared nurse workforce. So I appreciate your comments about the urgency of this bill. I don't see any questions or comments from committee members, but thanks for your patience.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we will hear from Kalina Sisankar.
Kalina, you're on mute.
Thank you. Sorry, I got the video on. I'll start that again. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to address the committee. I'm Kalina Sisankar. I teach philosophy at Gateway, and I'm the current chair of the Faculty Advisory Committee. I can't begin to do justice to the enormity of the mess described in the many documents produced by the FAC and various governance bodies across the system in three minutes, but I'm sure that you know that spending under control of the System Office has grown to a sum larger than the expenses of any of our community colleges. During the pandemic, our board documents will show that funding was drawn back from our colleges and universities while investments were being made in administrators for a college that doesn't yet exist and which has no students. You know that in the last ten years, the CSU system has had six leaders and that ten of the 12 college presidents have left. You might know that TAP was an initiative that gave some purpose to the 17 institution structure, but has largely stalled in the last few years as all attention has turned to consolidation. You know that in spring of 2019, faculty and staff across the system voted no confidence in the board, then-President Ojekian, and the Students First Plan. In the time since the no-confidence vote, we have had reason to lose even more faith in the plan. The first departments to be consolidated were IT and HR, and, as we speak, some part-timers and student workers are waiting for past due paychecks. HR is overwhelmed and warning that some services may not be available. And the semester began with students who could not access online classes for which they had registered and paid. Sign-on issues dragged on for weeks. The dysfunction is real. It has significant effects. Ten years on, it's time to take a good look at where we are and see what we can learn from this experience to recommend a structure that might work for us. First, though, we need a clear picture of what's going on, but this system is not built for transparency. Take the example of the fact that in the past two months, you have received competing analyses of how well we've met our projections on the cost of Students First in the Connecticut Mirror from the System Office and in an FAC report. Forget the content of those documents for a moment, though the content is significant. What's more alarming is the fact that rather than debating the wisdom and value of the investment that we are making in the most recent restructure, we are still debating what it is. We still don't know what it was intended to be. Our last projection for fiscal year 21 before adjustments for COVID anticipated that our community colleges would require almost $100 million more to run this fiscal year than they did in 2017 and 2018. If you wanted to know how much we've invested in this consolidation, where would you look? Implementation costs, as defined by our system, do not cover the roster of highly-paid administrators whose salaries will represent about $10 million over and above the cost of the 12 community colleges this fiscal year alone. If you wanted to verify the claims of savings due to consolidation, how would you check? Who would you ask? How many times would you have to ask them? And how many years would you have to wait for an answer? Not only is the dysfunction real, we also currently have no way to make its true measure. Dysfunction on this scale cannot be attributed to individual actors. It is a product of structure and resources. With a clear understanding of where we are, we can design a better structure for our public education system. I support adoption of HB 6402 with the FAC-approved substitute language provided in my written testimony and shared with your committee. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am, for your time and for your testimony. I see that Representative Turco has his hand raised.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you so much for your testimony. I I've asked the CSU system for some more information on the savings that the Students First Initiative has already resulted in, or if they still need more time for savings. They have produced some materials to us showing some savings already. And they also have said when I've asked about the hiring of all these new administrators, as you mentioned, in the System Office, rather than more people on the ground working directly with students, they have indicated to me that these are not, these positions were for individuals already working within the community college system for the most part. And it was consolidating of administrative positions with multiple positions into one, and it's actually a cost saver in adding these new people to the System Office because they were administrative, non-student-facing on the ground level. Do you have any thoughts on those responses that they've given me? And have you seen anything contradictory to that?
I'll say in terms of the savings, it's not entirely clear. I remember in October of 2019, there was this extended exchange between Representative Hadad, who was co-chair at the time, and Ben Barnes and Mr. Ojekian. And it went on for about half an hour with a promise that the sort of savings, the savings that were not due to attrition would be provided at some point. If they have been provided, I'm not entirely clear on what they are and what baseline we're using to really measure savings. The projections over the past few years have shifted wildly, so I don't know what we're comparing with and how savings are measured. And it could be the case that down the line, the structure could cost less. We are certainly facing a large number of retirements over the next few years, and I believe that there will be some shifts there. But at the moment, the felt effects are that while we may we are actually, you know, this, this sort of, the idea that taking people from within the system and moving them to the structure has no cost is just false in the sense that many times they're being moved from places where students are to a place where students are not, right? And this has actually happened at Gateway so that we have reduced capacity for counseling right now in the middle of a pandemic while we have more administrators at the System Office. And they're not being shifted without cost either, right? Each of these people have the average, I think, that their salaries are increasing are about $30,000 or $40,000 a year. So it's, this is a significant shift, and at this moment, when we need our resources most urgently for our students, the shift in attention towards administrators who don't yet have students to serve, it does not inspire a lot of confidence. So maybe there are savings to be had down the line. I do not see the immediate savings, but of course, I'm not an expert.
Okay, have you had a chance to review the, I believe it was an independent consultant review of the Students First implementation so far? It's a a thick document. I've gone through it, but have not read it word from word yet, but it did identify some areas where they have seen problems within Students First, I think, and then there were some areas where they think they've seen some benefits. Have you had a chance to look at the details of that?
I've glanced through it. I don't think there are a lot of details. It kind of, and, 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 you know, I think it we have looked, and we are certainly searching for information from other systems that have experienced this kind of shift, right? Because details are what matter. It really would help us sort of guide our our own implementation. And as far as that's, you know, that document serving as that kind of guide for another system, I don't see that it necessarily can, right? There are sort of general general reports of there being disagreements, et cetera, but, but I don't see it as being particularly specific or helpful in that way. That said, I did not read it that closely, but that was my feeling when I read it, that this was not as specific as it could be to really sort of guide someone through this experience.
Thank you, and I believe we're having an informational forum soon where CSU is going to present an update to us on Students First, where there's been some cost savings, where the challenges are, what's going to happen going forward. We're also talking to, you know, NACI Accrediting Agency to sort of talk about if they believe the Students First implementation is going well. And I think they're going to testify at this informational hearing. So it'll be good to to get some feedback from them if they believe that we're doing everything we need to do to continue our accreditation, because without that, we're very big trouble. I appreciate all the faculty from all of our community colleges and universities really helping out with oversight of the information of implementation of Students First. Another, you know, set of people on the ground that are really looking into all the details that we may not get, you know, of being at the Capitol and not being at the actual community colleges, because this is complicated. And for many of us that are newer to the legislature, we were thrown into this while the implementation was already happening. We were not in the legislature when this original idea had been proposed by, you know, the former governor and former administrators that they thought that the state needed to do this. But now we have a job of trying to provide oversight and making sure it's happened happening, you know, efficiently and effectively. So I appreciate all the faculty's help in providing that oversight with us. And we do want this to be truly a Students First initiative. I believe it's, you know, it's important to save money and consolidate administratively as much as possible, but not at the risk and the cost of hurting the education of our students. We want to make sure that this, the money that we're saving from this is going to then go towards providing students with a better education, and we will need your help to make sure that happens. So thank you for being here today.
Thank you so much, Representative Turco. May I just say something about the focus on NACI? I think that the focus on NACI is important. Of course, NACI is a gatekeeper, but I hope that our vision extends beyond the bare minimum for accreditation to a vision for the kind of thing that we want to offer Connecticut. You know, you've heard other members of faculty talk about the worry that we're moving towards graduation rather than education and about different concerns about the kind of curriculum that we're going to be offering. So I certainly want to hear from NACI, but please also be offering. So, I certainly want to hear from NACI, but please also think about the more of what we hope to actually provide. Thank you.
And if I could just ask one more question I just thought of, Mr. Chairman, is that okay? Since my time in the legislature now, a little over two years, I've seen, I've seen a lot of conflict between faculty and between the administration, the CSU system. And a lot of it's been over the Students First issue, but some of it's over contracting and other ways of doing things. And perhaps some of this conflict is good. Some of this conflict results in causing better ideas. When there's some tension, you find ways to do things better, to compromise common ground, and it's better for the whole system. But in some areas, it worries me that with too much tension between faculty and with administration, that we'll lose some sight on what's best for our students in improving our system. I want to feel like there's less tension, that there's more synergy and working together between the administrators and with faculty, and we're all moving towards the goal that we need towards, too. So, can you tell me, what do you think needs to be done that you're willing to say publicly here to get more of that collaboration? I know a big criticism from faculty with the Students First program and with other things is there hasn't been enough faculty input and feedback and buy-in to what the administration does. So, what do we do to help as legislators encourage a better collaboration going forward? What do you need?
That is such a difficult question, because you're absolutely right. You know, I always think that a certain amount of tension makes for the best product. And I think that, you know, when I was serving on multiple consolidation committees, that was the attitude with which I served, that I would provide critique to ensure the best possible product. What is, and that's sort of, that's what you expect of academics, right? But what we have found is that these committees were not really receptive to that kind of engagement. So, as a result, we're not that healthy sort of tension. It has turned into a little bit more of a toxic tension. And there's a lot that needs to be done to repair that. We are at a point where I'm, I think it's, I do not know, but I think that the issue is structural. And this is why I'm in support of this particular bill, because it's a difficult question. And the reason that we were able to get here, right, the reason that the System Office is able to go completely around all faculty bodies and dictate outcomes for courses, et cetera, right, with protest of the faculty, is kind of the reason that we need to review what we've done and figure out how we have the right sorts of stops and oversights and representation, true representation, where people who make these decisions are accountable to the people who are actually involved in the processes and are actually the beneficiaries of what we provide. So, I think it's a very difficult question. I think that's why HB 6402 is necessary, because we need to take the time and we need to have many different perspectives to weigh in on the best way to kind of create a healthier structure.
Thank you so much for that, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to questions.
No problem at all, Representative Turco. And thank you, Kalina, for your time, for your testimony, for your advocacy on this very important issue. We greatly appreciate it. And you had the unenviable position of, I think, being last on our speaking list today, so we appreciate your patience as well.
Thank you so much.
Have a great rest of your day. Madam Clerk, before we wrap up, I think I need to ask if there are any members of the public who didn't have a chance to testify who are in the waiting room?
I think we've let everybody in. I see nobody out in the out chamber.
Wonderful. Well, that being the case, I hope that, thanks to everybody who stuck around for this public hearing, and looking forward to seeing you at our next meeting. Have a great day.